Yeah, hold on one second. I think it takes a second for it to boot on. Okay, it says it's recording.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the City of Sandy Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 30th, 2020 at 6:30. We are conducting this meeting electronically or virtually via Zoom. I'll give instructions in a little while about how you can give testimony should you desire to do so. And we'll get started with a roll call. Cut.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing two recordings of it, so it's corresponding with somebody else. Okay, so Commissioner Carlton.
Present.
Commissioner Lasowski.
Here.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
She's muted. Just unmute herself.
Eric, Eric, you hear me?
Yeah, I hear. Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Maithen.
Present.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here.
And just so you all know, Spencer Persons from Barry Elsner and Hammond is on the call as well. He's filling in for David Doofman this evening.
Okay. Thank you. A welcome Spencer. All right, the challenge has been put before us to find the typo that Kelly got minutes that we have for May 27, 2020. Any corrections, changes, or did anybody spot the typo?
Nope. I, I moved that Kelly changed his typo.
In the, in the German, it says Commissioner Carlton for the first and second. So it's not a good, it's not a good thing, but he, he made two motions in the same motion, so I'll change it.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as corrected for 27 May 2020. All in favor, say aye.
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 I think everybody is mic. Okay. And this is the time when we give any opportunity for requests from the floor. That would be somebody who's participating virtually that comment they want to make to the planning commission on an agenda item, something that's not on tonight's agenda would like to speak. And if you, if you do want to give testimony or respond to this one, there's a raise hand button down at the bottom of the menu on the Zoom application. And do that in the way to be recognized, or if you're on the telephone, dial star nine, and that will virtually raise your hand and you'll be recognized. And Kelly is the one who tells us if there's any response.
Yeah, I believe, I believe everybody on the line so far is either planning commissioners, staff, or applicants for the different applications. So I don't believe there's anybody yet on the line that's a public member. So there's, there's no one with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We'll just visualize looking out to a pretty much empty room. Okay. With nothing more, we've got three public hearings, no old business. Three items of new business. Gilbury is the first one, and I'll get my papers here and open that public meeting at 6:35. This is file 20 dash 021, extension of the Jewelberry Ridge subdivision. I'll begin by calling for any extensions from anybody in the planning commission.
I'm gonna abstain from this, so my, I'm the owner of Lancaster Mobley, we were Lancaster Engineering at the time of that. We worked on the original subdivision application. We haven't had anything to do with this request for an extension, but in an abundance of caution, I'm gonna recuse myself from the agenda item.
Okay, thank you Todd. All right, any conflicts of interest? To declare? Any ex parte contact about the application? Any other challenges to anybody on the planning commission or the jurisdiction of the planning commission? Okay, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval, according to the standards. Because although this statement is not the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request the continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing, or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government for its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We'll move to staff report.
Great, I'm gonna share my screen. Kelly, you need to enable participant screen sharing?
It should be, it should be activated now.
We got it.
Right, so we're looking at a another subdivision extension. If you recall, we did one of these earlier this year, I think, right before the pandemic. That one was Marin's viewpoint, if you guys remember that. This is very similar, same, same really kind of issues and requests. So just to remind you, this is the Jewelberry Ridge subdivision up off of Jewelberry, north part of town. It's a nine lot subdivision. It was approved on July 12th, 2018. So the way the subdivisions work is that the tentative subdivision plat approval is only valid for one year. It expired July 12th, 2019. Emily is able to, as the director, grant an extension one year, and that extended to July 12th, 2020, which is coming up soon, so bring it before the planning commission and ask for an additional year or whatever date US decide on. So again, this is, this is what we discussed at the Marin's viewpoint extension as well, but typically we have the expiration dates in there in case the development code is modified significantly. In this case, there's really nothing that's changed that would change the staff recommendations and presumably the planning commission decision. So there's not really much of a reason to not extend it another year. So we're recommending that you just hear the applicant's request and then make a decision on how you wanna, or I guess if, and how you wanna grant the extension. And we need to be granted to a specific date, presumably July 12th, 2021, or another date that you approve. So should, should be pretty, pretty quick and simple hopefully, but that's it for the presentation.
Okay. Any comments for staff before we go to? The applicant? Okay, we'll move on to the applicant testimony. That, we have 15 minutes if you need it.
Okay, I shouldn't, shouldn't quite need that long, not, not much time. John Schmidt representing 4J Land Company, address of 3639 Southwest Baird Street, Portland. So Emily basically summarized the situation. We just, we need more time. We did have a party lined up that was gonna move forward and, and now they're, they're may, they may not. And, and so the hope is to still be able to do the, to do the construction this summer, summer of 2020, but even in that case, you know, we would, we would need an extension. It's possible that it's very possible that it'll end up moving to a summer 2021 construction. And, you know, unless someone wanted to, you know, ourselves or someone else wanted to construct it during the winter, but obviously it's always, it's always more economical to do as a summer construction project. And so I would, I would like to request to amend the request a bit, which would be to, if possible, to push it out like from 12, from a 12 month extension to say a 16 month extension, which would take it out to November of 2021, and that makes it so that you really can take advantage of that summer construction window rather than have to try to, you know, slam it out in, in the springtime when things are wet in order to meet that, the current July 12th cutoff. And so yeah, that's, that's basically the request. Happy to take any questions on it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a question of the applicant right now? Okay, we will move on to public testimony, and if there happens to be anybody listening now that wasn't before, we'll have it in three groups. We'll call for testimony of those who are in favor of the application. Also then for those who are not in favor. And finally, we will give opportunity for those who just have a comment to make, that we'd be either for it or against it. And just as a reminder, if you're in the Zoom meeting to be recognized, click the raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, you dial star 90 to, or star nine to be recognized. So any testimony in favor of proponent testimony at this time?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, any opponent testimony?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, anybody with a general comment to share?
No hands.
Okay, thank you Kelly. I don't know if you have any of a staff recap, Emily, but or any comments you've thought of in the last couple of minutes?
Um, no, not really. I don't think, it doesn't concern me that much to move it to November instead of July. I don't know if Kelly has any strong feelings on that.
The other question I have is, can you, can we do that Kelly, by the code? Can we, I mean, are we, can we go more than a year?
Um, it's a good question. I mean, a strict reading of the code would probably state that you can give no extensions. However, I don't think a strict reading of the code is really preferred. I mean, we did it for Marin's viewpoint. We're recommending a staff to do it again here. I've talked to my supervisor, the city manager, he's fine with granting the extension. We're gonna be actually proposing some code changes to 17100 in the very near future. And one of the code changes is going to be two years upon tentative plat approval instead of the one that's currently in the code. An additional year granted by the planning director as a type two, and then an additional year for planning commission. So this, what Mr. Schmidt is asking for would actually be less than the code that you'll be seeing next month as proposed. So I mean, I'm, I'm fine with going to November as well. As Emily said, I think we're trying to be flexible in times of uncertainty as far as economic uncertainties. So and staff evaluated Mr. Schmidt's proposal, and we don't see how running him back through the process would benefit the applicant staff, planning commission, or the public. So we, you know, we would say to grant an extension. That's what our recommendation is.
Okay, my, my only concern was just code, you know, legal, legal stuff.
And a question I had, just kind of remind us all, what, what has to be done by that deadline? Do the, all the houses have to be completely built? And on?
No, the, the only thing that has to be done by that deadline is all of the improvements like the streets, the curbs, the utilities. All of that needs to either be installed, so I can sign the, the plat, it can be recorded at the county, or they just have to bond all of those improvements, and then we can also sign the plat and it can be recorded. So home construction and individual sidewalks and street trees and that kind of stuff, none of that needs to be complete by the date that Mr. Schmidt is asking to give an extension to.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, or input before somebody closes public, wait, I've gotta give the applicant opportunity for any rebuttal?
Yeah, I'm good. I don't think rebuttal's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we take a motion to close.
Move, we close public hearing.
Second. Been moved and seconded. That was you, John, right, on the second?
Yeah, I didn't think I hit my unmute, but sure.
I saw the, I saw your box light up. We moved and seconded to close the public hearing at 6:47. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right, discussion or any questions? I think as Emily says, it's pretty much a straightforward thing. Any concerns over extending it to November?
I don't, I don't have any. I think it's gonna, but this is the first of, I'm sure we're gonna see maybe more if 2008 repeats it all.
I have done.
Make it November 1, or do you wanna match the dates with the 12th? Or the 30th, or whatever the last date, or the 12th, the 13th, or what date specific?
Would it be easiest to just do November 12th, 2021, so it's exact?
It's fine, it's really.
Do, do you need a motion?
No, it would be in the final motion that we would put that date in there.
Okay.
I just looked November, November 12th is a weekday, so that could, that would work.
Okay. Sounds like we're good with that. So I think without any further ado, we would take, we're ready for a motion. And for an extension to November 12th, 2021.
I move so.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the request for the extension, Jewelberry Ridge to November 12th, 2021. Take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Get that, yes.
Commissioner Mobley is abstained. Commissioner Maithen?
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stick around.
Okay, I might go have dinner. Have a good night, everybody.
John, just so you know, we will issue a one page summary with Chairman Crosby's signature that Emily will send you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the next one. This public hearing, we will open at 6:50. This is file 20 dash 006, Clackamas County Health Clinic. Call for any extensions from anyone on the planning commission? Nothing seen or heard? Any conflicts of interest? Need to be declared? Nothing seen or heard? Any ex parte contact, which would include visiting the site?
I drive by it every day. I can't, I get from my house to the world.
Yeah, I don't know if driving by qualifies as a, as a visit, but I understand what you're saying. We're all familiar with where the site is. I think we can agree on that.
Yeah, they used to sell cars there, I think.
Back in the day, I've heard.
A Ford. Right there in that window that sticks out on the corner.
Yep.
Or there used to be a window that sticks out in the corner.
Okay. With that said, let me go to my legal verbiage. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval, according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request the continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing, or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Staff report.
All right. So I think we've established, everybody's pretty familiar with the site. It's the old Oregon Wild Harvest Building on the corner of like Ten Eyck Wolf Drive and Highway 26 on the east side of downtown. It is in the C1 Central Business District. We had a zone change earlier, I think, last year, maybe earlier this year. It is now in the C1. I'm, I'm gonna go over the request and then focus on the adjustment variance and deviation requests mostly. But the overall request is demolish the existing building and construct a new roughly 10,000 square foot building along with associated site improvements that include sidewalk along Ten Eyck and Pleasant, getting rid of a couple driveways, redoing a bit of the, the parking area and improved landscaping. They're also asking for a type two adjustment to not include base material and 18% of the building's facade. Design deviation to use vertical groove sheet siding. Design deviation to not provide a primary entrance at the corner or within 40 feet of the corner. Design deviation to not provide a primary entrance that faces a public street or civic space. And a special variance to not meet the 40% window requirement along street frontages and where the building abuts a civic space. So this is just a, a general site plan. So we have the, the new building there on the, on the left, and then the kind of reconfigured parking area. And then you can see that the, one of the driveway approaches off Pleasant, and then the one off Ten Eyck are, are no longer gonna be there. This just shows the landscape plans. There'll be significant landscaping along Highway 26 and elsewhere along the perimeter of the site. They provided a few renderings, so this is looking from Highway 26 in, in Ten Eyck, looking east at the building. This is that, the main corner there. This is looking north from, from Highway 26, so this is what you would see along Highway 26. So south elevation of the building. And then this is looking kind of from the parking area at the east elevation of the building, which is gonna be where the main entrance is off the parking lot. So just go through those five requests. We have the type two adjustment to not include base material and 18% of the building's facade. So the areas on the diagram on the top there that are in red show where the gaps would be. And then I've circled where those gaps are just on one sample elevation, which in this case is the south elevation along the highway. So you can see kind of where there's the horizontal siding, that there would be no base material in that, those two areas, and then that's the same on the west and the east elevations. The applicant is requesting to use Nacia, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce it, but Nacia vertical siding. Our code does not allow vertical groove sheet siding. So they're requesting a design deviation to allow it. The picture on the left is a, a sample of the panel group sheet siding. And then the picture on the right is, is an example of where it's been used. I believe it's the lighter gray area, and in this case, it's been installed horizontally, but they'd be installing it vertically. And I think the applicant will probably go into a little bit more on this.
On that, which, could you go back one slide? What part of that building is the siding supposed to be on? Is it on, is on the building but horizontal?
Yeah, I believe it's the, the gray on the right hand side that's the siding.
Yeah, almost white, but okay.
Taller half, right. That's what it looks like, taller half up and down?
Yeah, it's the area in the right, not the cedar area, but there in the right, and it's installed horizontal as opposed to vertical.
Yeah, on this example, I, that's my interpretation at least. So they're also requesting a design deviation to not provide a primary entrance at the corner or within 40 feet of the corner. Based on the narrative, they're saying a corner entrance wouldn't be practical because of the nature of the building as a health clinic and its relation to the parking lot. We think it, you know, staff, it does make sense to have an entrance by the parking lot. It would certainly be possible in theory to have a second public entrance at one of the corners, either Ten Eyck and Highway 26, or Ten Eyck and Pleasant. But because it's a health clinic, it's not, it's not quite as practical as it might be for another building, since health clinics usually are a little more secure and they have kind of one main entrance with the reception desk and waiting area where people check in. So I think that kind of makes sense. The street facing entrance is somewhat similar, so they're asking for a deviation to not provide a primary entrance that faces a public street or civic space. Again, the parking lot's existing. It makes sense to have an entrance near the parking area. And, and similarly, it would, again, it would be feasible to have a second public entrance, but it is a health clinic, and so it does typically just have kind of that one main entrance with reception desk and waiting area. So looking at windows, they're requesting a special variance to not meet the 40% window requirement along street frontages where the building abuts and where the building abuts a civic space. Our code requires ground floor elevations to have windows. And on lots that have multiple street frontages, they have to meet the standard on two frontages. So buildings up to 10,000 square feet, which is what this falls under, are required to provide windows on 40% of the ground floor elevation. So what they're proposing is 43% on the east facade, which is where the parking lot is. And then 27% on the Highway 26 facade, 28% on the Ten Eyck Road facade, and 23% on Pleasant Street. So this is what that looks like. So on the north elevation, which is Pleasant Street, the, the kind of these checkered hatchings are the windows, and it would be 23% as the proposal. And the south elevation, which is Highway 26, it's And the south elevation, which is Highway 26, it's 27% windows. The east elevation is 43% windows, so that's the main entry area facing the parking lot, but not along a street or the civic space. And then the west elevation on Ten Eyck Road is 28% windows.
All right, Emily, could you go back one slide? Well, one more from there. Can you explain what that, what looks like a fence or something that's going along there on that, on that south?
I think it's a ramp.
North elevation?
Yeah, I think it's a ramp up to the, there's a pedestrian door.
A wheelchair ramp.
It's a wheelchair ramp up to the door, and is that actually a fence that's gonna be out there with still the sidewalk extending beyond that?
I know it's on their property, I think it's just a rail.
Okay.
I'm not too sure. So they are proposing 43% windows on one of the elevations, but it's not the one that faces a street. They're not proposing to meet the 40% window requirement on any of the three street-facing facades. So one thing their narrative points out is that this building is just under 10,000 square feet. If it were over 10,000 square feet, the window requirement would be 25% rather than 40. They've also stated it's not practical to have 40% windows on two of the elevations because it is a health clinic. So again, there is that privacy issue. Looking at the special variance criteria, criterion A, it's, you know, is that it doesn't violate the intent of the code and is not detrimental to public welfare, it seems to fit that, so we think it would fit criterion A. Again, because it's a health clinic, staff understands that there's a need for privacy. We could do something similar to the tractor supply or added, you know, windows with permanent window coverings to maintain that privacy, but that's somewhat burdensome and not, not really necessary, I think. So we are recommending approval of the proposal with the conditions that are in the staff report. And then we are also recommending approval of the five requests. So the adjustment to the base material, the special variance to not meet the 40% window coverage along two of the street frontages, design deviation to allow the use of the Nitschia siding, which is the vertical groove panel siding, a design deviation to not provide a corner entrance, and a design deviation to not provide a public entrance facing a street or civic space.
Emily, I don't know if this, since you have these up, maybe it's what kind of to ask a question that I, I had, and you know, maybe this is, you know, for Kelly, it's up to you to how you want to answer it. This is actually kind of a really interesting list because the, we have an adjustment being asked for, a variant, special variance in this case, and deviations, all being different. You did, Emily, you did a very good job in the staff report or the, the adjustment and the variation of going through the code, which is 17.66, sections 40 and 80 of the criteria that, you know, that needs to be met for, for us to, you know, approve those two. 1766, to me, it looks like, appears to be silent on what criteria we kind of go through to decide should we or should we not grant a deviation. Maybe that's not the right place to look, but I noticed in your staff report, your format of your writing is a little different in that as you just kind of go through it and you come up with a conclusion without referencing some of the piece of the code. So I guess I'm just asking for my edification. You know, do we have criteria in the code as per adjustments and variances to decide should we or should we not grant a deviation?
No, unfortunately, we do not, makes it a little weird. So yeah, they're just discussed, the deviations are only allowed for the design standard chapters of 1790. And there are, there's no criteria, so it's just discussed as part of that chapter in the appropriate section.
Yeah, when Sandy style was adopted in 2008, there was no design deviation criteria ever adopted into the code. Furthermore, it was not, it's not even that clear on when to use design deviations, but in speaking to our attorney's office on several occasions, we've come to the conclusion that they're only for qualitative items within 1790, since if you go to 1766, anything quantitative in the code, including 1790 Sandy, Sandy style falls under the variance procedures. So design deviations in summary do not have criterion, and they're only for qualitative measures in 1790.
So just, is that something that you could put on your honey-do list for code modifications or? I mean, a lot of this, of course, applies to common sense, but you could have a good standard deviation around common sense. And anyway, now I've just thought it might be good if we had something that helped us guide there a little bit.
I mean, we could certainly take a look at it when we look at the Sandy style revisions that, we're actually already currently looking at those. However, I don't know if there, we'll have to do some research because I don't know if there's any other towns that have a similar procedure.
Well, that's good, that's great, that means we're number one, right?
So I guess my, in summary, yes, we can look into it, but we might not have a lot of examples to provide you. So you might be creating your own process essentially.
Okay, that's Brian, thank you, appreciate it, Emily, thank you for letting me just butt in there for a second.
Anything else, any other questions for staff? All right, we will move to the applicant's presentation, 15-minute presentation.
I'm Lori Kello, and I'm the architect with Anker Moissan Architects located at 38 Northwest Davis in Portland, Oregon, 97209. And I represent Clackamas County in the, what our design goal was, was to create a new community clinic and located on the east end of Sandy. It would be a gateway building and represent the Sandy guidelines with all the materials and finishes and design features that would make it blend in as well as stand out. Because it's going to be a new community service building that provides both primary care, dental care, behavioral health services. There is a level of privacy that's kind of required for those services to be provided in the community. So while we try to comply with all of the guidelines, some of them required due to privacy, a deviation or variation to those. We've tried to make doors and entrances, although they may not necessarily be public, they are visible. On 26, we have kind of a courtyard that has a door into it that is coming off of the staff break area. We have a door that is located on the corner of Ten Eyck and 26, and that actually is an exit door, not, and if somebody needed to be accessed from that end, it would be best provided by a doorbell that somebody could come and join them. And then the primary entry, of course, is off of the parking lot in the corner there. So that, that is, as soon as people park, patients can immediately come in undercover into the vestibule, into the main check-in area. To answer a question that was on the Pleasant Street side, there is, because of the grade of the site, we have some accessibility concerns. And so with the new sidewalk, with removal of the driveway that's currently there and the infill of the sidewalk on Pleasant, that will be the main on-grade access for wheelchairs. And we have an exit path that's on the Ten Eyck side that you can exit out of the building and come down to that. Or you can continue on down to where is going to be a new civic square on the corner right by the entry on that path there. So what we tried to do was we tried to incorporate the colors. We have the metal roof, which will be one of the Sandy guideline colors selection. And then what we tried to do is create a blend with both the base of materials as well as different levels of siding to create an architectural interest and still meet, you know, the areas of the facade where it moves in and out and creates a visual interest as well. As well as in new landscaping all the way around it with new trees and in some of those renderings, they looked a little beige around there, it's not going to be that beige. So this, this is the corner of Ten Eyck and 26 and kind of right around the corner from those double windows is an entrance, what's not an entrance, it's actually an exit for fire code, but that's if somebody needed to be able to access from right there. Somebody could ring the bell, we could come and get them if that is to do that. I don't have a, we are, we have all the parking that's for the patient parking in the parking lot. There's some shared parking with the police station that's worked out in agreement. And then there's overflow parking with the Emmanuel Church of Pleasant Street for staff.
This is Scott Sukup, also with Anker Moissan Architects. Don, just to answer your other question regarding the Nitschia siding. So both of those materials that were shown on that veterinarian clinic were the Nitschia materials, the kind of wood-looking siding is almost exactly what we're going to be using for the wood portions of the building. It's the redwood horizontal sliding, and then the vertical was that lighter colored material, but it'll be a darker gray, they have a few different color options, so we can match it to one of the City of Sandy Miller paint guidelines. So we'll be doing that and just having it mounted, it's kind of a panelized system with vertical grooves, so we figured that would help give this a more more vertical texture that would kind of align with the City of Sandy guidelines.
Could you give us your address for the record?
Oh, yep. It's my, my address, address or the work address, 38 Northwest Davis.
Yeah, work is fine.
Okay, 38 Northwest Davis, Portland, Oregon.
Thanks.
Yep.
Though the, though it's something that looks like cedar, isn't cedar, it's a, is it a concrete composite also?
Yeah, yep, it's a fiber cement panelized system, so that'll help it stay looking nicer for longer. And it looks pretty accurate to wood siding, but should be more durable and won't fade as quickly over time.
If it fades, how's it, how do you make it look back like cedar siding?
They can reapply some of the textures, so there's a coating that they put over it. But it shouldn't stay looking the way it does for, for quite a while.
Well, you know, my concern is, well, you know, this, this is a good elevation, this is a south elevation. We know we're in the north hemisphere, so, you know, this is outside of the building that gets slammed. And of course, this is the most physical side of the building being on 26, so this is the one that if something's gonna fade, it's most likely to be your first clatter out of the box.
Yeah, definitely.
But I think this, this is also a good one to show what Emily said, is that the stone is all around its base, except if the areas that are in the cedar tones, then there's no stone there. That's basically the gaps they're talking about.
Yep.
Correct.
Hey, anything else, Lori or Scott?
I know, I, you know, we're looking forward to having this building replace what's there and we hope that it gets built like is proposed.
Okay. Well, we have you here, Scott, talking about that siding, the cedar siding, the renditions have the appearance that different panels are different shades or, or something, is, is that the way it'll actually look so that there's, there's differences of color or?
Yeah, there should be variations in tone. So it's not like one coat of paint put on it, it's, the actual material is textured as well. So it's set to basically have the wood, the grooves of regular wood. And then the paint comes in various shades and they kind of apply that so you can install it in kind of a similar way where it doesn't look like one monotone color.
Okay, that was my question.
We have samples of it as well.
Yeah, well, that's one advantage is when we meet in person is you can have panels sitting there and, you know, one drawback of our current situation, but you do have pictures in your submitted documents, so the only problem with those is depends on, if your color printers got the right amount of ink in each of the cartridges, sometimes it might come out different. Do you have, you have a list of the colors, I guess, in our approved palette? So the colors that you had listed for each one, Emily did point out, are not exactly listed. I did actually find your, your weathered copper over on Medallion's website. You know, there that we referenced the Medallion website. Medallion Industries over in Estacada for the roofing, and so they also had the other stuff, so I saw, you could see what it was gonna be there, but so is, is a whole building appears to me that's gonna kind of have a gray, more of a gray tone in general than other, because the cedar will be there, but the cedar's not the major part of this. Both the roof and the outside.
A little bit warmer too, since it's more of the coppery, kind of, so kind of a dark warmer tone. I think the renderings are making it look a bit more gray, but it'll be more towards the gray end, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that was my impression, and this is just going in the colors, because the, when I looked at the base color of that, of the, that appeared to be really dark. And, you know, a low lighter color on the, for the base brick might help it be seen a little better as opposed to blend out. So I mean, those, that was, you know, just what I kind, I've kind of noticed.
Okay, thank you, thank you all, we will move on to public testimony. And again, giving opportunity in three segments, those that are in favor, those who oppose, and those who just have a comment. If you're on Zoom, click the raise your hand icon, if you're on the phone, dial star nine, that will virtually raise your hand and just wait to be recognized. So begin with anybody who'd like to give testimony who is in favor of the application.
Just giving it a minute here. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Anybody who wants to speak who is not in favor of the application? Indicate by raising your hand.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, and any neutral testimony, just general comment about the, the application?
I see one hand raised, and I will click on the allowed to talk.
Okay, thank you for joining us, and please state your name and your address for the record.
Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Black Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any major issues with the proposed building, it's gonna be a great opportunity. One of the things I just am curious about is that, and I, for some reason, thought the meeting started at seven, so I got on late, but I meant to testify earlier, is that, you know, making, making our way through 311 pages of a staff report is just daunting. And I, you know, I would just love a show of hands, did anybody read all 311 pages? Anyway, raise your hand if you did. All right, drawn. Anyway, raise your hand if you did. All right, Ron.
The bottom line is, the answer is yes, but you also gotta be sharp enough to know which ones to to skip by because they're architect stuff. Focus on the stuff that's important.
And and I think I know that too. What what my point though, Don, that I want to make and I I I really want you guys to consider this is that. I love the job, the PowerPoint that Emily and and even Kelly has put together on these things in the past. Those are really kind of the gist of it for the public and and for you all too. It kind of boils everything down. To what the important part is, skips over all the other stuff. And and I guess what I'm asking you all is that if you could please post those PowerPoint presentations. You know, at least several days before the meeting so that you all can look at them. We can look at them and we can kind of get an understanding because it's just too much to expect. The public to to even delve into three hundred pages and know what to skip over and what not to. And even for me who who's been through looking through these things before, I find it hard, you know, like the the. The actual diagram, pictures and stuff are like on page one hundred and two of three hundred and eleven. And there's not a table of contents, and so it's just very challenging to kind of find our way through. This has nothing to do with the Clackamas County quotes. I'm just asking as a favor. You know, I just really think it's important to be transparent and to be to make it as understandable as we can for the public. So um given that, the the one thing that I guess I would kind of point out, I you know, I'm fine with the variances that are being proposed as far as the entrance. And the um you know, which side of it is on um the windows are, you know, okay, I don't have a big problem with that. The question I would have is with the stonework. The thing that it looks like the stonework is just looks like like dark gray cement. Is that? Is that the stonework? I so um that's a question.
Kathleen, um this is Scott Sukup uh from Anchor Moisten. So the base is gonna be rusticated darker CMU. So it's larger concrete blocks, but they're the face of them on the exterior is gonna be cut in a way that. Uh makes it look more rugged, I guess. Um this way, so it's a rougher cut. Of stone and kind of a darker stone for the base. So it just looks like just flat concrete.
Is it, you know, I mean, a concrete block or because my understanding of what our design style was is to have. You know, something that appears as stone, um not just concrete CMU.
Okay, can I can I interject here? This is not, this is not the place in a public testimony for a discussion.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Ask a question.
Okay, yeah.
Scott and and.
Okay.
Their recap and rebuttal.
Okay, Mike, I appreciate that. Thank you, Jerry. My comment would be that um the proposed. CMU stuff looks just like dark concrete blocks and doesn't look really to me anything like stone. And then the second thing is that the Nukish, what's that stuff? Dakeisha or whatever?
Nietzsche.
Whatever, that stuff. Uh with the vertical is not really again, very um anything. Looks that looks like Sandy's style. It's kind of much of a much more modern looking thing and I it. So I guess those two, the the stone and then the vertical uh stuff is is kind of a. I would have some, I guess, cautions about, you know, is there something that we could make? Both of those look a little bit more in keeping with the Sandy style with something that looks more stone-like and something that works, looks more. You know, wood-like or or you know, or put it horizontal or something like that. Those would be my two comments, and otherwise I think it's a great opportunity to have a new clinic here in town. There's a real need for it. And the design overall looks really um handsome, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to our community. So I thank you very much. But yeah, just the the two, the stone and the vertical, the Kishi war or whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other general comments?
No other hands are raised.
Okay. We'll go to staff recap.
Um I don't have much. I think I'll let the applicant with the architects talk about the um the stone base and exactly what the proposal is. And then I I think the the Nietzsche siding, I mean, again, it is something, the vertical groove panel siding is not allowed by our codes. I think it is. A legitimate thing for the planning commission to discuss um based on the the. Material sample that they took a picture of and submitted. Um and then the picture of the. Head score, I think. Um it it looks decent to me, but I am not by any means an expert in submitting, so. I defer to somebody with more expertise on that. And I don't think I have anything else. Kelly, do you have anything?
Not really. I mean, some of that design stuff's kind of in the eye of the beholder, in my opinion. How I try to evaluate these sort of things is not get too nitty gritty when I do my reviews. If it meets the code, it meets the code, in my opinion. Um the base material is rather dark. Um so. If the if the applicant is open to other materials, I think that's a great idea, but. As Dawn likes to say, at the end of the day, I think the base material meets the code, so. And this is not a conditional use permit, so I don't know how we would make them switch the base material. The vertical siding that is panel siding like Emily talked about and is a. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a deviation request. Yeah, that you could condition a different siding material if you want, because that is not allowed by Sandy's style uh without a deviation, so. Other than that, I agree with Ms. Walker. I think the building is gonna be in a great, a great addition to Sandy and the services they provide are gonna be tremendous.
Chair, can I ask a question real quick? Can Emily, can you put the slide back up that showed all the variances and deviation requested in one snapshot for me real fast?
Yep.
Is that possible?
Yep.
Just made it easier for me to to parse them out in my mind. Okay, thank you.
Can't hide this thing.
So are we into the discussion now or we are?
Quite there. The applicant has opportunity for rebuttal. So Scott or Lori or both, if you have any.
Yeah, this is Lori. So one of the things about the siding is that the same sidelines. Are very clear that they want a variation on the elevation. They want it to move in and out. And uh to have a liveliness to it, and the same goes with the roof line. So that's where there's pop-ups and there's movement and. So one of one of our goals was to. Make those movements on the elevation uh look different, and that's why we did not want to make the whole thing. Just lap siding all the way around because it lacks kind of the visual interest or the design intent of to have the movement of. Of the elevation not to be one uh big flat facade and uh to have two different directions on it. Also provides um you know, a modern interpretation, and yes, it is a modern interpretation, but. I think it still blends and meets the guidelines of what you the design intent is. Um I think the base also being it's a rusticated base, and so while it's not actual stone, it is a rusticated base. So that um you know, and colors can be changed as they need to be, but I think the rest kid basis. Is also an interpretation of the uh stone that's um been outlined. And colors can can modify uh to be, you know, better or to be blend better.
I I agree. This is Scott. Again, I agree with everything Lori just said, um and we can take a look at the colors too. In the Sandy design guidelines, I just pulled it up again, uh under figure seventeen point ninety point one twenty dash G. It does say that for the base, uh stone masonry or rusticated concrete is allowable for a base under the Sandy design standards.
And my my concern more was the color than it was um necessarily what that was. That's I. I was, I would guess I was just looking for. It's not just that, but then you look at this, you look at the roof and you also look majority of the siding. It, you know, runs you to a quite a bit of gray, and so I. I thought you you kind of lose seeing the rock is what you basically do and uh and we want to. See that accent, so I would ask that maybe you guys could maybe just look at a little lighter color so that if they does. The solid rock base is more obvious to the person coming through. Sandy at twenty six slamming on their brakes to try and go from sixty miles an hour at that stop sign. That stop light, the first one into Sandy, by the way, I'm well aware of. That would just be my aesthetic thought, and I think the building might look a little bit better with just a little bit lighter color, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question, Chair of the Builders or Architects? Is there any way for you to give us um a percentage of surface facade that would be? The vertical versus the horizontal uh lap siding? Like, is it fifty fifty? Is it forty sixty? Is it twenty eighty on on each of the elevations?
Yeah, as a so as a ballpark, I'd say it's probably about seventy percent vertical, probably about thirty percent. Horizontal on the horizontal, we're trying to have as more the key kind of areas that pop more and draw your eye to it so that. That vertical siding is a little bit more of kind of the background uh base of what you'd see. And then the the much redder kind of redwood um horizontal, larger slats of siding. That'd be more of the key elements. So like right at the corner is kind of forming the gateway element. And around it uh kind of what forms the exam area too. It's it's kind of used as a portion that. Helps certain portions of the building pop out more.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Emily, could you um drop the the recommendations now if it's okay with folks? That helps the Zoom appearance. Thanks.
Okay, we will um. Do our normal thing where we we will keep the public hearing open. While we have our discussion for the for the purpose of us asking the uh the applicant a question if we have one. Then it means that the public, public comments have now um ended for this public hearing, so. We are in our discussion time, but we're also keeping the hearing open so that we can talk to Lori and Scott if if needed. Questions. So and I would just um. To get us going, just ask us to focus our attention on those uh the five things that we have been tasked to make decisions on.
Jerry?
Yes.
If I can throw a stick in the into the or wrench into the thing, whatever the saying is. What Kathleen said, reading through all the materials, I think that's something you came across. I came across. Another deviation variance that isn't there that I think needs to be on the list as well.
Okay, mention that one.
What?
Which one was that?
No, I'm saying that it's not on the list. All right. And I'll explain it. When I opened it up, again, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a great looking building. I think it'd be a great addition to the community, but nothing um would like to see the same move forward, but struck me. Was when I looked at the building was a sandy style and I was, where is it? There's wood, there's stone, et cetera, but it didn't have that Cascadian feel to me. To the degree that we've seen in virtually, I mean, everything else that's come before us. And so I went back and looked through how to quantitate the the sandy cell. And again, when I go back and look in. My notes here. Oh, was it one ten? Section B. You guys know better than me.
It's B, uh building materials, section three. Subsection E. Which talks about building elevations facing a public right of way shall incorporate at least three of these following features.
And the the there's six of them. It's exposed heavy timbers. I don't see any exposed natural wood beams. I can step through these, but. When I read through it. It kind of solidifies for me why I didn't see the sand stuff because I don't see those things in it. To the degree that I think I'm looking for in terms of the sandy style. So I'm trying to do my best job to quantitate or elaborate on that point, but. I don't think the sandy style is there. And could when I read through the applicant, they touch upon it. In their narrative that they supply, they did a good job laying out. It's on page thirteen of their material they pointed out. And for their reply to subsection E, they say building elevations facing a public right of way. Or civic civic space incorporate the following features. Wood door and with window trim and fascia, metal canopy, metal brackets. I think the metal brackets are a real push on it, so. Maybe it's a technical, it's being the sandy cell, but I don't think it really represents. The sandy cell that we've seen and I thought that we were trying to get across by having it here, so. Anyway, I could elaborate more, but I'd probably just be a little redundant. Hopefully I've made my point. It's a good look. It's a great looking building. I just don't see the 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 again, the stone that's being presented is in there, but it's. Doesn't give me that Cascadian feel. Again, I don't see any timbers. I don't see any brackets. The things that we've seen all the way along in virtually, I not virtually, all the other ones, so. Commercial buildings. So anyway, that's one that I think that should go on. That I didn't see addressed.
I'm looking at the um, uh well, I'm looking at both things. I'm looking at the code and I'm looking at the applicant's response. The wood door and the wood trim and fascia is not on the list of in the code unless you slam it under. Six, which is similar features consistent with a family style, which is better known as the miscellaneous category. And then I don't see any metal canopies and or or brackets. So there's, for example, when normally. On the entrance that in this case would come out from the parking lot to just pick something, you know, we basically had, you know. You know, covering come out, you know, you know, accentuated door, you know, covering with the timbers. And at least the rendering just kind of shows, I mean, obviously the front door is recessed a little bit. But the covering of the entrance to the door is the roof. So um even though they say metal canopies and metal brackets, I don't, I don't see those, so. I agree with Ron. I mean, I think it's a rebuilding and etc., but if you want to compare what's in the code. Those six elements against this, what they say. I don't, I guess I don't see that there. I don't know, Emily um you know, wrote up in the staff report on it and didn't really. You know, say that deviation was needed, so I, you know, I'd like her to, of course, chime in um, you know, kind of on that, but. Now that struck me also, though, again, I love the building. Don't get me wrong, uh and I want to let the applicant, I mean, don't get me wrong. In terms of that, uh basically.
Sorry, I was on mute. I was gonna, I was gonna jump in right there with you, Don. I'm I'm in full agreement with with Ron and Don. That's the same thing I looked at when I saw the renderings of it. I was questioning the feeling and look, and I think being on twenty six, that's that's a, that's our main drag. That's where I think the the visual of the building is very important. Of what the sandy style is and and I was and I was missing that, so I want to. I want to, I want to concur what they said as well, the functional use of it, I'm very happy to see this. Being proposed in Sandy and I look forward to having it in Sandy and I would like to see it through forward, I just think that we need to look at the building. Itself and the way it looks from the exterior, does it meet the requirement of the sandy city style and. I, I won't repeat what Don and Ron said, I just say I concur with what they were stating earlier.
Don, what was that code section, it's one ninety what?
The actual code section. Is. It's one of those that's kind of buried, so we're in seventeen ninety one ten. Major section B, which is the building facades, materials and colors. Then within that, we're at three. So we're B three, which is building materials. And then under B, it has several subsections and section E. Says building elevations facing a public right of way or civic space shall incorporate at least three of the following features. And then we kind of get into a, the list that Ron tended to, he gave the first few. But the metal canopies and the heavy metal brackets. Are five and, are four and five, I mean, they are pretty much listed verbatim. The first one that the applicant lists, I don't, I don't see unless you put it under six, which is the other category. The first three are exposed heavy timbers, exposed natural wood beams, posts, brackets, et cetera. Or three natural wood colored shingles, other words, the side of the roof. Is, you know, basically that, so. Again, it, it just seems to me like if we're okay with the building. That a person really wants to read the code, it seems like we would need to approve it. Some kind of an exception there, I'll leave Emily tell me, it was a deviation adjustment or a variant. In terms of that. But I, I mean, I have my code book in front of me and I, I pop that out and. So I don't, you know, I mean, these are accent type features, I don't. Don't know. If there's an opportunity to work with the applicant on that, or obviously the staff. Affluence have felt comfortable during their pre-app meetings and post after that, or they wouldn't let them get this far without something, you know, in discussed in relationship to that.
That was brought up in the pre-apps that the building didn't have adequate sandy style features. I know the applicant did a good job of adding more on after the pre-app. You know, I will say as Ms. Kello already said, is it's a modern take on sandy style, so. I think it is meeting the code, but as the planning commission, you can decide that you don't believe it is meeting the code or. You know, condition additional requirements on the applicant and then it's up to the applicant if they want to comply with that or challenge. Your interpretation and go to city council with an appeal, which I would hope would not be the case over something this small. But as Ms. Kello did point out during her testimony tonight and also to staff at the. It's a modern take on. Again, like I said earlier, it's an eye to beholder, I don't know if Emily, you have anything to add to that?
Well, Kelly, I don't think you said, I don't think this is a small detail at all, I think it's gargantuan. Because throughout the last ten years that I've been here doing this, this is what you strive for is to have a certain feel to it. And again, I appreciate the modern look or take on it and. It throws out all the, it feels like the, the work that has been done on all the other buildings is for not. I mean, little metal brackets complying with three of the six technicalities. You know, the, it's the definition of. You know, I'm here to help interpret, this is not sandy style, okay? And I think some things could be done very easily to gussy it up to give it that feel and still retain the modernness of it. All right, but I, I can't go ahead with it the way that it is, so.
I think, I think what, I mean, what Ron is basically saying, and first of all, I know what we, we have a tenant that says. Every project stands on its own. But it also is hard to. Not look back at what we've required of other developers or other people have just done voluntarily. And basically. You know, a baseball pitch away, you have the Dutch Brothers, just to pick something that's new. And, you know, they went, you know, kind of over the top, you know, and there was no concerns whatsoever. And you've all been around town or been around the Northwest, you've seen Dutch Brothers that look like they're, you know, run out of somebody's garage shed. You know, I mean, there's a wide variation there. You know, and, and so you look at the expense that developer went through. To basically do that without any argument, you know, basically from us. And I just think you generate a slippery slope and the critics. Of which there, I'm not going to mention names, but we've had a few in front of the planning commission. To start their presentation off, the sandy style and then it goes on from there, I mean, it's God's. Reason for the coronavirus, it was the sandy style, I didn't know that. But the point is, we give them ammunition, you did this for so and so, how come I gotta do, and, and I know we, we say that we do everyone on its own. But it makes our life more difficult, I think. To basically do that, so it's hard, it's hard for me because I, and I'm wrong, I know the same way, we love the building. It, it's a great looking building. But there are parts of the code, it's just pretty, pretty obvious are not being met. And unless we give them a deviation, it's really. Interpreting the code. I'm thinking incorrectly because they just, they, they list two things and I can't find the metal brackets and I can't find the metal awnings in any of the renderings.
Well, to me, that's the, that's something that I think would be helpful to raise while the public record was open. Just to give the applicant a chance to rebut if their critical criteria that some, some feel are not satisfied. And since they're still open, is that something we'd entertain is allowing the applicant to respond to that and maybe kind of. Walk through those criteria and determine if they're met and so how.
But we are, we are still open, so if we want to turn the floor over to the applicant, we can without.
I'm kind of maybe more curious of just where we, we sit on it. We can hear back from the applicant for sure, but you know, if, again, I've said before, if I'm the lone wolf for being Don, then. You know, we're, that's just our side. Our, our view on it.
So the elephant in the room here I see as the missing deviation that you brought up. And if you go down that list that Don was reading off, yeah, it's really. Hard to look at this and say, yeah, this meets the intention of sandy style and I agree with what everybody's been saying. It's a great looking building and I do like the modern rendition of, except. It doesn't have a lot of features that are outlined. In the code.
I guess they're kind of like design elements, you know, we, how many times we, we say you got to have three design elements, we give them a list. You know, of what those basically are, and that's what this list is, they're design elements, but. One that they list that they're, they have isn't on our list, so. And the other two, I don't, nobody's mentioned or showed where they're basically at. And if they're not obvious enough to be able to see on the renderings, either the renderings are inaccurate. Or if the public isn't going to see them, you can't see them particularly coming down twenty six. I mean, just think of the, just think of the. Goes on top of the tractor supply store, you know. Comes out, it's got some wood beams, I mean, it's, it's a standard type of entrance that we have, we've had on, you know, a lot, a lot of buildings. And, you know, this one just looks like a normal walk into a building in downtown Portland.
Yeah, I, I would agree with everybody in terms of, I think it's a beautiful building. I also, as a healthcare professional, you know, we are so in need of a larger community. Resource like this, so I'm really glad to see it coming along. I guess as I'm sitting here, I, I agree that there's some design elements that I'm, I'm questioning and I'd really like to hear from. The architects themselves. I want to be careful that we're not, that we're, that we're following, our questions are in service of. The code and not personal style, so I do want to hear from the architects. But they're the professionals in terms of what it looks like, in terms of like colors and stuff, as long as they're within the sandy style. So I guess mostly I'd like to say that I, I like the look of the building, I do want to hear from the architects. As to how they believe that they're meeting the criteria and if they have any ideas, because this seems like a good time to have that conversation.
Okay, and I think. Scott, you, and I'm not calling you to respond specifically because Lori can, but you had the code open earlier. And it is seventeen ninety one ten. It's a page thirteen of seventeen ninety. But just to kind of summarize what, what we're asking of one or both of you is. Just walk us through this section of code. And tell us how you see that you have met. Is that, am I, am I saying that correctly to my fellow?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess it is kind of getting into something a little bit subjective, but I think I, I understand too what you're talking about. For what the city of Sandy design and guidelines are, can everyone, does everyone see my screen of the? So I think the exposed heavy timbers, we aren't really complying with, and I think that's maybe what everyone's latching on to, because those pop up. At a lot of. Buildings within Sandy, a lot of newer buildings especially too, so we have.
That's not, that's not what I'm, I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to simple, you know, there's six things in the code. And I don't see them regardless.
Can we let the applicant speak please, just for a few minutes? Thank you.
So for, yeah, we'll walk through it, so no, no heavy timbers. For the exposed wood color beams, brass brackets and or trim, we have the window trim. And kind of the wood look too, with the Nietzsche panelized product. So we'll have the, the required four inch window and door trim around the full building. So that's that one, and then. For the natural wood color shingles. And our siding, the, the redwood, Nietzsche, it's not specifically wood, but it should look like wood. But still be more durable and last a bit longer, metal canopies. I'll go to the site plan quick just to show where we have them and then the rendering. So we have a canopy over the exit to the sidewalk outside of highway twenty six. We have a canopy facing Pleasant Street near this exit.
Yeah, no, Scott, you.
I got a static view.
Yeah, I see it, but it's not moving around at all if you're scrolling.
Are you, can you see the, sorry about that, can you see the, the site plan right now or?
No, see part of it.
No, no.
Oh, interesting.
I can see it, it's kind of zoomed in and.
Building elevations.
Yeah, but you can't see a full one, Scott.
Yeah, you're on sheet A three eleven, it says at the top.
Oh, that's not where. Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on, sorry guys.
Maybe close it, start it.
I have, yeah, I'll stop share really quick and see if that works.
Well, it might be, might be better instead of that, which is your software is, is to go to the same thing that you had. Just as a page in your application and in the PDF and then you can zoom in on that.
What image are you all seeing right now?
It's the elevation, I mean. Yes, it's partial.
Oh, actually. Let's see.
Don, what page is that of their report?
Can you see the landscape now?
No.
Landscape plan, oh.
No.
Oh, I saw it flash, I saw you drag your window up, but nothing appeared, it must be hidden behind it.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening, so I've zoomed out a bit.
Can you close, now the, the exterior elevations, can you just close that sheet?
Are you seeing it right now?
Yes.
Okay.
That got better.
Here we go. Yeah, so it looks like I have the other screen on.
That's better.
Let me know on the site.
Okay.
Landscape site plan shows.
There it is. Landscape plan.
There must be some lag. Sorry about that. Could you see my mouse moving right now?
Yes.
Okay, I was, I was just going to walk through where we have the metal canopies. So we have a metal canopy and I'll show this in the rendering too. But first, just walking around the plan, we have a metal canopy that's covering this doorway. Out to the sidewalk along the highway. There's a metal canopy within the courtyard, then a wood trellis that extends out from that canopy. There's the roof overhang at the primary entry, as we've said, and then there's a metal canopy. Facing Pleasant Street near this doorway over here. And so for the renderings, I think we actually extended this out more, so it's showing shorter than it actually will be in the rendering or in the. Model, but we have a metal canopy right here and then within the courtyard. And I don't know that there's a rendering, you can kind of see it behind this pop out. But there is one on the side entry facing the intersection of ten, I can Pleasant Street.
Yeah, I think the problem is there's maybe dating going on between when the renderings were done. Because there's even, if you look at different elevations, there's actually different things in that courtyard. And the. You know, they just, you know, they're not shown like. Like it looks like in the one you're looking at right now, it just looks like the roof just sticks out and the front door is just recessed in that. Called metal covering is just an extension of the roof, which is metal.
Yeah, and we have the, yeah, the rendering is a bit older than the current. Model, they, they were done in two different pieces of software, so I think that's what the issue ended up being. So for example, that wasn't showing these two additional bump outs where we'd have additional horizontal. Redwood look siding and then the vertical siding in between.
The redwood siding is kind of shown on this one, this one rendering you have, and the roof is kind of raised a little bit.
Is that the, the main entrance, are you talking about that one or?
Well, on the east elevation, yeah, I, I think, you know, this is one of those things, a picture's worth a thousand words for a simpleton, so okay. So, you know, when you have all these elevations on one page, my balls start spinning around and I try and figure out what's basically there. Four good pictures in color of the four elevations gets you a home run and. you just don't quite, go ahead, see those, like the, the trellis that's in the courtyard, and one rendering looks one way, and another rendering is not there, and a third rendering, it looks different. So there, there's obviously different stages of things there, and that's why you've probably heard some of the comments on when I said I didn't see any metal awnings, well, the renders don't show the metal awnings, they show extensions of the roof.
I think that kind of gets to Hollis's point, though, is, is an awning really an extension, isn't an awning, and it's both an extension of the roof or a separate piece of the building that's not an extension of the roof? I'm not, I'm not trying to advocate for the applicant or for the commission side of things, but I think there's two ways to interpret those different sections within the code. I mean, I think to define what an awning would be, we'd have to look at the definition for an awning.
I think it goes, also goes to, the drawings were, they were hard to interpret, because some had the bump out, some of them didn't, to try to piece it all together, and then to look at a new type of siding, and then have it shown on just one building, but in ninety degrees from what it's being proposed. You know, I'm really trying to work here and work through it, but I'm not, it'd be really nice to know solidly, what am I looking at? What is the, the product that's being proposed? So I, I'm not, there's no bait and switch, it's just that there's some iterations here that make it tough to get a true view of what's going on, and especially with the siding going down the road, you want me to buy off on this? It'd be great to see it someplace to see how it looks.
I mean, I, just to further expand on my thought there, I, I mean, I agree with you, Ron and, and Don, that it doesn't really follow the traditional Sandy style buildings that we've seen over the last twelve years, I hundred percent agree with you. So I guess the question really is, are you comfortable with a modern take on it as is being proposed by the applicant? And if not, is there conditions you would like to apply to modify the building design and have them come back to you? Or, I guess, what would be, and I, and I know it's just the two of you that are speaking to it now, but it sounded like there was other people on the commission also with the same concerns.
Well, before you answer that, can we hear the applicant go over five and six? Because he's only gone through the first four.
Go ahead, Scott.
Sure. Six, I don't know exactly how we get through that, because that's pretty subjective. The similar. Consistent with Sandy, so, yeah, pretty much. So I mean, that could be fristicated stone base, or, but that's a requirement. So I won't necessarily address that. But I guess I might have a question that, like, what, what is the intent with that? Or like, what, have you seen anything that applies with six, or? How would that get interpreted?
I think that's your.
Or, or is that kind of the, the item with the, which, which is an awning versus overhang?
I think that, I think that one is you telling me what your building looks like that's similarly standardized in the, in the city already. So what about, how about number five, the heavy brackets? I think we got stuck on, on metal canopies, I don't have any notes for, for the brackets, can you go over that?
Yeah, so the metal brackets, the portions of the building that pop out, this is sort of the frame around the bump outs of the buildings. That's all of these half gable portions. This is actually metal, sheet metal that'd be covering the entries, just to basically act as a frame.
Yeah, there's just, just, there is a little bit of a delay, just for your information, when the.
Okay.
When it pops up. So that black area that, right there.
Right here.
Okay, we'll discuss what those are.
Yeah, so this is a metal, a metal frame that'll be forming this pop out.
So now I'll just go to my, my general, my general talk with, with the commissioners. I like this look, I, I, I fell in love with this when I saw it, I, I really do like this look. It's really when we turn to the other side, and we put that vertical paneling up, that the look changes drastically for me. And when you go to the, the side of twenty-six, it looks like a majority of that building is going to be vertical sided, and, and that's, to me, that's, that's where I get disappointed. I may not be seeing, it looks like there's some cedar on the front facing of that other outcove. But that's where I think it's, if, if that, if that horizontal was pushed further across the building, say, maybe it encompassed seventy percent, I think it would have more of the look I'm looking for. And that's what I think, how I say, I'm, I'm, I'm close to what Ron is saying, I'm just missing that feel, and there are, there are points in it, and I like the more modern feel of it, but it, it needs to blend well with what else is existing around it. And I'm, I'm just missing that connection.
I think the metal awning that is missing over that door would help with that look in that vertical siding there, that, that is missing from that door on this elevation.
All right.
I think that would help.
Right there.
Yeah, the, because it'll end up being deeper.
So, you know, I, I agree with, has been said about the different views, and it is very, very confusing. You know, like, right now, I'm just looking at page ninety-five of the packet that we're looking at, and you have two different views, or, or the same view, but two completely different looks. I don't know if anybody could pull that up.
Well, John, kind of your point, I know, think, I, I'm not going to be able to get there tonight based on what I've seen, and I don't particularly want to sit here and try to design what it's, what it should look like. I'm just saying, for me, it doesn't hit the mark for Sandy style. I think some things could be done relatively easy, but I don't think it's our job to do that, to design it. And I don't want to walk away with tonight with a, you know, it's okay with proposed deviation to make it hit the, hit the kind of mark Sandy style. I think we, I think for that point, you address all the other ones, go back, get the renderings, views, and present it back to us. And I hate to, I don't want to hold anything up, but I'm thinking, we owe it to everyone else in the last ten years that has gone to mark to make it. And I just don't think, again, this hits it for the Sandy. But again, I'm just, I'm just one vote.
So I'll weigh in real quick, if I, if I could. I, I appreciate the sort of more modern take on the Sandy style, and I don't have the institutional wisdom some of you guys have had that have been on the commission a long time. But I don't know, walking through, it needs to meet three of those six criteria. Frankly, I think he meets that goal. And then for the vertical siding, that section of the code starts with siding views, but that vertical wood siding even mentions vertical roof, like E T one eleven, sheet siding or similar materials are prohibited. But to me, that looks like a lot of different material than T one eleven. So I can get where that, that becomes a deviation, I guess it is. But I think you could also read that to show that you meet that section. So I, I get what other people are saying about how it doesn't look like other buildings in town, but I don't know that the approval criteria are, that it looks like other buildings in town. So I don't know, I think I could get there tonight, I think they meet the criteria. They've definitely gone about it a different way than a lot of other buildings in town, but I'm, I guess I'm cautious with the personal opinion. Hollis mentioned, so those are my thoughts.
Scott, I, I would say that I'm exactly in that same place, that I think that it, it, I could get there tonight, that I think that it does meet it.
Yeah, my, my concern is not that it looks like any of the building in town. I'm not comparing it to the police department that's right there, or, or whatever. I'm in a, my mind is at a very code interpretation standpoint, Kelly's where I'm at. I'm looking at, at the code, and one of those six things, the staff report, I went back, looked at again, is silent when it comes to that section. So, you know, they tend to address it. It just doesn't appear to me that it's clear from the renderings we have and the explanations that have been provided, that they, that, I'm convinced they have met the code. I, I'm not the modern, I don't care about any of that. All I'm saying is I want to make sure they met the code, so we don't get it zipped back at us by other business owners who want to, quote, save money, or, or whatever. So it's a code issue with me, it's not anything else, because I like the building.
Well, I think, I think he's done a, I think the applicant said already, they, if you look at the six criterion, they, they've, they've met number two with the window trim, they've met number three with the vertical siding, and they've, and they've met number four with the metal, metal canopies, and they've met number five with the, with the heavy metal or cast iron or similar appearances with the, the black wraparounds. So, I mean, in that sense, to me, if what he said is accurate to what those pictures look like, he is meeting that code of the section seventeen ninety-three E.
I agree with that, it'd just be really nice to be, look at a rendering and say, this is the one that it is.
You know, we've been down the path at times to see renderings, and not to pick on anything other than the tractor supply store. You know, we thought we were going to get windows on the highway twenty-six side, and even to the point where they were putting up concrete block, I remember emailing with Kelly and saying, where are the windows going to be? And he told me, hmm, I think they're going to have to start getting out some sledgehammers. And so, I mean, staff with, thought we were getting windows. And at the end of the day, we ended up with, with faux windows, which is why I, you may remember at a planning mission meeting after that, I handed out Webster Dictionary Window to everybody, just for grins to see, you know.
I remember.
Because, you know, when we, the window means you can see through it. So the point is, is that, you know, you can have these things that slip and slide with all, even within all the good intentions of staff before what you see on the ground. Then once it's done, like the roof on the library, you can't do anything about it. So maybe they're just, we could, staff could write up, maybe you've been to staff report a little bit to expand on that, per what was said, I think maybe it was Chris that said it. They should have the documentation of what we are expecting and what we would see.
Can I suggest, can I suggest something? I think, I think more so, because I, based on what they explained, I think they are meeting those three features. However, in saying that, I think one thing you guys could look at is the figures within the Sandy style design section to determine if you think it's meeting the intent of those figures. That's the purpose of having those figures in the code, was to show examples of what Sandy style is and what Sandy style isn't. And that's why there is like four figures in seventeen ninety-one ten that show examples of what the code is trying to achieve.
The place, I'm, I'm glad you said that, because, you know, I, I jumped in, and, you know, I went, every time we go through this, I get a little smarter on the code, and you think I'd know it after about fifteen years, but I don't. And appendix E one of our code has a picture that, you know, Kelly, you probably are aware of it, that shows the, the Safeway and bend and all that, and it's titled, "Design Elements Consistent with Sandy Style", and that's exactly what we're talking about. And you can see the obvious design elements basically here. They jump out at you, you don't have to look for them and say, oh, well, I guess that meets it, et cetera. So I, I mean, if they do meet it, I think they're meeting it on the, on the edge.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at figure seventeen ninety-one ten F and seventeen ninety-one ten G, those kind of show examples of what is the Sandy style.
Well, having, having the architect go through those, for me, solidified that they're meeting it. I believe the expectation is of the, of the director to make sure that the construction is correct. We just interpret whether the code is accurate or not, and based on what he said, I, I would tend to say he is meeting that code.
My last, my last bit on it is, we go back on the, the wood siding taking place for, I understood to be for the wood shingles. You know, I have a hard time getting there on that. I mean, I'm looking at the pictures that Don was talking about, and again, the, the wood shingles are there to give a, a definite look to it. The siding that we're talking about turned sideways is not the same thing to me on that. That's not a wood shingle. But again, it's, it's, that's why we have these discussions like this, it's different interpretations. So.
I'm sorry, I'm the one who missed putting that section in, and I will definitely add it to the final order. But in terms of the six things, and then thinking about things we usually count, the two that are strictly listed that we would count are the wood trim and the metal canopies. Under number six items typically associated with Sandy style, we would also count the stone base and gabled roofs. So those are things we usually count, those would be the four that I would list in that section when I write it up for the final order.
I think that part of the reason everybody likes the building and thinks that it's handsome is because they do have so much variation, and they have done so many design elements. They're a little more modern take than we're used to, but there's a lot of diversity in the building and the different surfaces. And so I think along with the fact that they have met a number of criteria, I, I would be supportive of it.
And I couldn't, I have one more question, this is probably for the architect again, since we still have them here open. The, I was concerned about a walk-up entry, I know there's a lot to talk about the door being towards the parking lot, and I saw it placed adjacent to the, the corner of the building. Is it going to have walk-up access on Pleasant Street to the building?
Yes, the sidewalk comes all along Pleasant, and it terminates, there's kind of an open civic area that'll have some seating and planting, and then there's a walkway that goes across to the front door.
Perfect, thank you. I, I mean, one thing I do want to add, too, is that, I, I think this is kind of missed, not, not exact, so, sorry, I'm trying to collect my thoughts here. So even if you don't believe it's meeting those six criterion to a T, one thing that they're proposing with this building that Tractor Supply, Goodwill, Wendy's, all these other facilities we've seen recently built around town, is they are actually proposing a real, true pitched roof. Everything else we've seen is an applied pitched roof with their cabinetry up on top, so it's all fake, it's all faux, and that is a cheaper way to design a building, because you just put all the mechanical units and everything else on top of the building. They're actually housing all the equipment within the building and putting a roof pitched roof on this facility. So I ju, I just want to keep it in mind, because I, there's a comment that we want to make sure that they're not doing things cheap and doing things, you know, on the lower budget end, I don't think that is the case. I think it's the architectural vision, whether you agree with it or not, is what's leading to that. I think the building is actually a very high-end expensive building, more so than some of the buildings that we've seen recently built, actually.
I just want to go for myself, Kelly's comment is, I never, if I inferred that I thought it was for cost cutting, et cetera, my comments had nothing at all, even remotely, to do on that. It's just a different interpretation, it's a great-looking building on its own. I just think it doesn't hit the mark on the Sandy style, so. Okay, end of horse.
Any other final comments before we close, and then we go into?
I, I don't know what the feelings are, Chair, on, on each of the items that we need to cast a vote on, but I'm, I've got a few yes, or a bunch of yeses, and I do have one no vote in that list of items. So I don't know if we need to do them separately, or do them together. I mean, just for the record, my no vote is, is on, going to be on the siding, the deviation for the siding, because I don't like the amount of surface space that it's, it's having. But that's just my vote. The rest will be a yes for me, so if we had to do those combined or separately, I would just ask for a separate motion for that one.
No, we will have to, we will have to do them separately, because this is, five things that they requested. I have decisions. I have decision points for us and we'll have to make a decision on each one.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, really now, right now, our only option is to close the, close the public hearing, which is not an option, but to do that and then. Finalize our discussion into a motion. That we'll have to do tonight. So unless, unless there were. The only other. Possibility, and we cannot request it, as you all know, a continuance for the applicant to. To. Come back with some, some better rendering and so forth, but. We cannot request that. Just, just so you know, if you were thinking that.
I mean, you could, you could, just for clarification, you could delay the decision. The only problem if the applicant doesn't agree to a continuation. Then we might be running up against the hundred and twenty day clock if they decide to appeal your decision. Our attorney, our attorney could speak more to that.
So, yeah, I don't know where we stand, Kelly, on the hundred and twenty day. Clock, but certainly the planning commission could continue the hearing. And deliberate at a future. Meeting, but if you're up against the hundred and twenty day clock, that's what would require the consent of the applicant to extend the clock.
So we can continue it on our own choice? I always thought it was the applicant had to request it.
No, the applicant has to consent to an extension of the hundred and twenty day clock, but as long as the city remains within those hundred and twenty days. If you, if you aren't able to process a hearing, an application hearing in one evening. The planning commission is certainly able to continue it and ask for additional information, ask for staff to draft. New or different findings, anything of that nature. The only thing that's solely within the control of the of the applicant is the extension of a hundred and twenty days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was clearly understood. So the hundred and twenty day clock is the end of August. So. If you requested, or if you wanted to see more information and extend this out to the end of July. You would have to make it, and if the applicant didn't. Agree to an extension on the hundred and twenty day clock, you would have to make a decision that night. We would have to write up the order super fast in anticipation of a potential appeal. So. It's it's doable. It would just be very tricky. The other consideration is planning commission or city council is not meeting after August third for the rest of August. So in full disclosure, they would have to hold a special session to hear this item if it was appealed. Not that that should enter in your decision tonight or not, but I'm just giving all the facts. So you know the schedule.
Yeah, I think it's okay to to vote and, you know, it's perfectly okay for a member to vote no. And as long as the majority of the. Commission, you know, is in favor, that's, you know, can kind of move forward. So I don't want to interpret this because. Some of us have said we have some concerns, might, won't know on this or on that. Doesn't mean that the whole thing wouldn't pass.
Okay. With that, with that kind of as a background, then I think what, correct me if you have other ideas, but what we should do is look at each of these five requests. And. Do a, an individual vote on each one. Do a simple majority. Would. Would rule. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
Want me to get started, Chair?
Yeah, well, we'll just start. I'll just start with the first one that we have.
Hold on one second, Chairman. Were you guys going to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I was thinking we did. No, we haven't.
If we, if we close it. And we want to continue this, we have to do that. Can we do that closed?
You'd have to reopen the public hearing at your next meeting.
Okay, because I'm just.
If you want to take testimony, if you close it this evening and you want to continue it simply for deliberation and decision, you can do that without reopening it. But. If you close it for public testimony and you want to take more at the next meeting, you'd have to reopen it.
I'm just kind of holding back of, I would, and I'm not sure exactly on it, is like to see new drawings. Come back and then look at those to vote on. So. To actually vote on. I'm not sure what I'm voting on right now, to be honest. So.
Okay, how does, how do the others feel on?
Can I ask Chris a question on his comment? You know, Chris, you were saying you were concerned about the second one, the, the vertical groove on the. On the main siding.
Yeah, there's their, their number three design deviation of section seventeen ninety one ten B three D one.
What would happen if they just swapped and took the stuff that's in gray and put it into the. The cedar looking siding and. And then reverse that and put the gray on the minor side, which would then make the building, the architect estimated seventy percent. Cedar looking and thirty percent gray.
That would definitely change my vote on that line from a no to a yes. That's why I asked the percentage around the building. What I'm most concerned with is just the. The, as you're coming down twenty six, how that building, the front face is going to appear. And I just feel like that vertical siding is going to be overwhelming. On it. And I, I get it. It's a, it's a different look than all the other buildings. And it's not that it's a bad look. I just don't think it's a represented look. I think that the the vertical siding would be more suited for the majority of the facing. And I would argue the same point for. The Pleasant Street side as well, because that's the walkability side.
Yeah, if you bring up the, if, I don't know if somebody could, if you bring up the one rendering. That is looking at, shows the east elevation and part of the. South elevation, which is the one Chris was talking about. It's just kind of what you see when you come into town from the east. I think you'd get a, and if you, if you think about what that would look like if you flipped the, the colors, I think you get a whole different impression. Of. The more wood appearance.
I don't know that, well, I suppose we could condition something like that, but.
Well, and I'm just, and I'm just giving, I'm just giving my interpretation of that code and and what I think is applicable and what its intent was. And that's just my voice. Certainly I wouldn't, I'm not an architect. I would need to see it. To say it, but I just feel like in the year that I've been doing this, the, the, the more the facing looks like that, then the, the better the building. Style is. And this is just a dramatic turn from that. That's why I said I was on the record of saying no for that one.
I'm, I'm with Chris on saying no on that one as well. But again, if there's something different. I need something better to look at to really make an overall decision too. And again, that's just me. There just seems to be a lot of moving parts here that I. That I'm being asked to interpret. Or not even interpret, but to visualize in my head.
Can we ask the app, sorry, could we ask the applicant? If they could get new renderings to us before we vote? Or is that, and does that have to be? Are we looking at two months out if we have to do that? Or how soon can we do that? I guess is my question.
You see, Spencer, help us there. That would be a continuation.
Yeah, certainly you can ask for it. I think the applicant would need to answer about turnaround time on getting those to this, back to the city.
Yeah, we'd have to do that at our July meeting, I guess, which I, you know, Kelly's probably got all stacked up. Or hold a special meeting somewhere between here and there.
And I don't want to take us down a different path, but just thinking of expediting this. If there's five bullet points that we need to vote on, and there's only one that's going to hang us up, we can go ahead and vote on the other four and continue the fifth, if that's an option. Or we could just vote on that fifth and even see if it needs an option.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yes, you can break up the votes and for the ones that seem, if you're going to. Address each of those ones individually before you make the final formal decision, you can, the planning commission. Can vote, can work its way through those and vote on those. And if that looks like you've got. Sufficient votes for one or all of them, you can go ahead and do it. And, and even. I'm, I'm not really sure on the vote count, the tentative vote count at this point, but if you've got it for all of it, then you could even theoretically vote on a final decision.
As long as we have a quorum, regardless of what, if somebody wants to wait for, for, for more, as long as we have a quorum, can't we vote anyway?
Sure.
Yes.
The dilemma with the hundred and twenty day rule is only a dilemma if the applicant. Does not give us an extension to the hundred and twenty day rule. So I think, I think that's even more important to figure out than how long it takes to get the renderings back. I think the most important thing is the applicant be willing to spend a hundred and twenty day clock.
I guess, and I would say that that only matters if we don't have a quorum to vote. Because if we, if we have a quorum to vote on the item, we don't have to ask for the additional time because we're voting and moving on if we.
Yeah.
Yes.
You mean, you don't mean a quorum, you mean that a majority of people vote away and make a decision.
Enough people to make the decision correct.
Because you have a quorum at this meeting tonight.
I'm sorry, I was meaning, I was thinking technically, yes. I'm sorry.
Spencer, a question for, for me is. Do we have? Five decisions that we've been tasked with? Or do we have one big one with five sub points? Or do we have six? You know, what is it? Do we? Do we make a motion that says we approve the file and we. Grant, you know, four of the special requests and deny one? Or do we just vote on the five? Thing and just say that our response is yes on this one, yes on this one, no on that one, and that's our decision collectively?
You, you can, you can attack it any way you'd like. Often, I think what makes sense. From a procedural standpoint is if you aren't clear on one or more of them, that kind of have a. Pre-motion of the council that kind of walks through each of those. And then when you have a clear idea, somebody can make a motion for the large. Decision that says, you know, motion to approve with the requested deviations except blank. But you can, anyone at any time could make a motion to say, I'd like to make a motion that we deny. Request number two, for example. And you could get a vote on that just so you have an understanding of it. And that is if you. You know, if you can't discuss through or can, you know, get to a clear consensus just through dialogue. If you have a clear idea. The, on each of those, somebody can make a simple motion that says, you know, for example, motion to approve. And grant. Deviation request one, two, and three, but deny four, that you can handle it that way also.
Okay. I would like to get a feel for where we are on each of these five things and then. And do it by. Like a straw vote. So we kind of know where we're at and then step back and look at the whole picture and, and see how. An understanding of how we are individually on these sub points influences the big picture. Does that make sense?
Jerry, what I, what I think is important is it should be okay for a person to vote no, for example, on one of these. But still on the entire application, they could vote yes or no.
Correct.
They, in other words, I think it's important for a commissioner to be able to express their yes or no vote on each individual request for a deviance of variant or whatever. Which, because then the other thing we vote on are all of these conditions of approval. And I mean, that's all wrapped up in the final motion.
And that's exactly where I was going, was trying, hoping to get a feel from everybody on each of these points. So before we go there, again, I, I don't think we're going to hear anything further from the applicant. We need to close the public hearing.
I'm moving close to public hearing.
Thank you.
I said.
Let me see, who got the second there?
I, I won.
He won. Hollis wasn't quick enough on the unmute button.
I was smiling at you, Hollis, but my camera's on, I'm sorry.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. And at eight thirty six, I'm looking at my clock here. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, everybody heard. All right, let's just kind of plow our way down through here. Let's, I want to get your, your, each person's take on each of these and then we'll see where we, where we end up at the end of that. The first adjustment is to not include the base material on eighteen percent. Of the building's facade. We're talking about the. I call it broken half block, but.
The bottom stone.
Bottom stone look. And this is deals with the percentage, not, not so much. Does not deal with the look, but the percentage of it. Who wants to come in on your thoughts on it?
I was a yes on that.
Before I start calling names.
Oh, we, since it's a video thing, why don't we just kind of have a raise your hand, yes or no?
Okay, let's go, let's go with, first with yes. If you are in favor of granting this one, raise your hand.
Yeah, that's not going to work because Chris's video is not enabled.
My hand is raised.
Okay.
My hand is raised for the record.
Let's, let's do the raised hands again.
My hand is raised.
Okay, I think we got everybody on that one.
That's everyone.
Okay. The use of vertical groove sheet siding and the point here is the vertical. Not, not the color, not the.
It's sorry, technically, it's actually that it's a vertical ribbed panel. Vertical siding is allowed if it's board and batten. Just that it's a panelized piece of siding with vertical ribs.
Okay.
We have tongue and groove. Excuse me, board and batten. We have that basically is approved and we have a kind of requirement for the battens or something. This is kind of like to me, board and batten, but. The vertical pieces are really close together. You know, they're not just kind of spaced out. Is that kind of your interpretation, Emily?
I don't, like I said, I don't know a ton about siding. I think it's just that this is sort of a pre, prefabricated panels, I think easier to install. They did include the specifications. I don't know them off the top of my head that, of how wide those kind of. Grooves were.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't care if they're panels or or not. I was just looking at the appearance and, you know, what we have is the approved siding, you know, we have. You know, we allow, for example, you know, batten, board and batten. And that's a vertical oriented situation because of the battens, you know, or, or the boards, whichever one, Kelly, it is. The vertical pieces, you know, are, are there. It's just there's more vertical pieces in this when you look at it.
Yeah, our, our interpretation was that because it's a panel. And as, as Commissioner Mobley pointed out, it's not T one eleven, but it's, it's similar to T one eleven in that you're installing it in panel sections. That's why staff felt it was a deviation.
But it's a concrete, it's kind of like hardy plank, right? From a construction standpoint.
Right, right, exactly, yeah. It's much, it's much better than T one eleven.
But the. And, and the look of it is congruent with what we're wanting in, in the code. Is that correct? I mean, it's what it looks like.
I, I guess that's, yeah, that's up to your guys' interpretation.
I'm hung up on the, the, your, your problem with it being a panel. If somebody were to just use four by eight sheets of. Non groove T one eleven textured plywood. And nailed battens on it. nailed battens on it, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that meet the code?
Yes.
With board and batten. And yet you've used panels to do it. So I don't, personally, I'm, I'm struggling with why we're singling out that it's a panel, as I understand you're saying.
I mean, we're just, this is the reading what the code said. Let me get, let me get to it here. I didn't write this code, as you know, so all we're doing is trying to interpret-
Live with it.
It says, hold on one second here.
Sure, I've got it.
Vertical grooved sheet siding and similar materials are prohibited. This is a vertical groove sheet siding. It's not T-111, but it's vertical groove sheet siding. It's, it's being put up with vertical grooves in sheets. So I don't, I don't know how else you would interpret that.
No, no, you're- Yeah, this, each siding is, it's all you would see is the whole sheet. If you put, if you were to put battens on it, you would kick yourself up into the trays above it.
Yeah, so I had the lovely benefit of installing siding for my father when I was a teenager for two straight summers. This is definitely vertical. I, I mean, I think it's very clear that what they're proposing is meeting the prohibition within the code. And then it's just your interpretation whether you want to allow that or not. That's why it's a design deviation.
Okay, other comments before we do a straw vote on that one? Okay. If, if you are in favor of granting this design deviation, raise your hand. What am I seeing?
Chris, what are you doing?
My hand is not up.
Okay.
Okay, I-
Todd?
Yeah, I see two, okay, your hand was up, Hollis is three.
Yes.
I see that hand. And I'm going to vote in favor, which would be four.
So just for the record, I got McLean, Wenzel, Logan, Mobley, and Crosby voting yes. Is that correct?
Correct. And the other, the, the rest of you remaining, you're voting no, or is there an extension in there?
You haven't asked a question. Yeah, I haven't asked for the no vote yet.
Hey, I will ask them for the no votes.
My hand is up.
Okay, so Maite and Carlton and Losowski.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next one, this is to not provide a primary entrance at the corner or with the 40 feet of the corner. Any further discussion needed on that one before I call for a vote?
I, I just want to, just remind everybody of the need for privacy in a building that's serving the public in this way. So I really think that we should be granting this.
Okay, so who is in favor, the yes vote on granting this one?
Chair, my hand is up.
Okay, and adding mine is, is six. So that would be everybody, Kelly.
Everybody was a yes on that one?
Yes.
Then it'd be seven, every seven.
Yeah, seven people. Thank you.
It should be seven, yeah.
All right, the next one is, the not, the request to not provide a primary entrance that faces a public street or a civic space. Anybody have this, any further discussion on that one before I call? Okay, if you are in favor of granting that design deviation, raise your hand.
Chair, my hand is up.
That's a seven person.
Seven, that is everybody. And the final one is the special variance did not meet the 40% window requirement along street frontages where the building abuts and where it abuts a civic space. Any further comments or discussion on that one?
I would reiterate Hollis's remarks.
Mine, I-
Go ahead, Ron, I think you've got a couple talking together.
Ron, you go ahead.
Thank you. Mine is, I think you make a really good point on, there are almost 10,000, which would lower it. All right. And I'm gonna go a technical no on it for the fact that I think our attorney pointed out that full windows are, really windows can be viewed as windows. And so another code amendment or change, I think should be to include the word full windows as a window, because that will allow the applicant to go through, just like we did on, with Space Age Gas, they went through, where it wasn't feasible because of reasons within the building to put on those full windows, but still give the appearance on the outside. So.
We'll do the same thing with tractor, tractor supply. So, I mean, I guess I, I would just point out, this is, this is only just to help make us all better, but looking at the staff report, you know, on that section, at the very, very end, in bold, there is the staff recommendation that we approve it. You know, and, and it was written, it says, alternative, the applicant could install additional windows with permanent window coverings to provide privacy by full windows. But staff feels the method is overly burdensome and unnecessary. And I, I'm glad that Emily pointed it out, but, you know, really, planning commission should kind of decide that. So I'm not sure we, you know, I think what's important, I guess I'd just like to, to share, the role of staff is to help work with the applicant to meet the code. And so the first part of the sentence does that. Now, if the applicant wants to do it or not, that's up to them. I don't know if it's overly burdensome or not necessarily. But it appears they didn't pursue it because staff didn't encourage them to pursue it, potentially. So, you know, it is an option. How practical it is, I don't know, because the staff, I mean, their architect would have to show us. I did look at the floor plan from looking down, look at the windows, and all the windows that are currently there kind of make sense compared to what's on the inside. That's what I wanted to make sure that I kind of, kind of lined up, you know, mentally. So I just would like to encourage to, I'm glad we're letting the applicant know how they could meet the code. And I'd like to encourage them to meet the code if possible. And then if they don't want to, then they can come to us with a reason.
Well, to be clear, they're not meeting the code. That's why they requested the special variance.
Yeah, but I guess my impression when I read it was, well, they probably got the impression from staff that, well, I don't need to pursue that, when in the end of the day, it was really the planning commission's decision. So if we, for example, turn that down, they got led down a path, you know. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to be, trying to make us better, Kelly, that's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, that, that's not what happened. Now, we just present what the code says and then present the options such as special variances and deviations. And it's up to you guys to decide if you want to grant them or not.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. For the period would have been where the comment is, I would ride on with what you're saying.
Chris, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just reiterating what Hollis said. I wanted to re, let people remember that, what kind of building this was, the, the intended uses and the privacy that's needed within it. So.
Okay.
I think I'd add kind of in support too, there, there are fronted, there's a lot of frontage on three streets that's a little atypical. So to meet that requirement would be, I think, pretty difficult.
I mean, I thi, I think part of staff's evaluation on this is to show support for an applicant that's trying to meet the code as much as possible. We just had another applicant just recently with a mini storage proposal that was much below these thresholds. And it was approved by the planning commission. So we felt like what they're proposing was adequate.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that influenced me, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go in vote yes, mainly because it is a 9,300 square foot building. 10,000 is an arbitrary number, 40% is an arbitrary number, and so is 25. So, you know, I think it's close enough to where, you know, it meets the intent. If it was just a hair bigger, they would, we wouldn't be talking about this.
I'm gonna go back as, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go yes on it as well. But I think the other one too is, I'm not so sure, well, I am sure myself, that we shouldn't be looking so much into the building itself. I agree for privacy issues on it, not having the windows, fantastic. But going back, we had somebody wanted to put a cooler up against the wall and use it that way. And we, some people wanted more light to come in the building. That's the person building the building. If they don't want to have it, fine. So let them have the out of having the full windows to do that, if they, you know, if they want to meet it. So I don't think, I mean, my decision's more based upon the numbers as opposed to going inside the building. The same with tractor supply. They didn't want to have windows. We wanted it to look a certain way. So they put the full windows on. Great. You know, so.
That's great too. I mean, really, let's get used to it.
Todd, do you have a comment?
I'm, I'm just looking at the floor plan, and there seems to be a window in every single external room except for the dental operations area, which, you know, like Ron said, you could put a full window on the backside of that. But is it, I don't know if it's necessary in, in this case. I'm a yes.
Okay, well, let's go. Now, finish that too. If you would, are in agreement to grant the special variance regarding the window percentage, in other words, you're a yes, raise your hand. Chris, where is your hand?
I'm sorry, I could get to the mute button, my hand is up.
Okay. I counted seven there, if I'm not mistaken. So everyone on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now let's just stand back. We've, we've kind of sounded out to where each of us are on all of the special requests. If by majority vote, each one would be approved. Did somebody want to stand back and make a, a final motion? Or do you have further discussion? And as Ron, or as Don said, the final motion would include all the findings of facts that are in the staff report, including Emily's comment about the findings on that section D would be in the final report.
I guess the question, and I know Ron was talking about this, so are we making the decision on the rendering or on the exterior elevations that are more of, it's like the design view, I, I suppose. Exterior of elevations, general notes, exterior elevations, because those have all the designs that I like. But when I look at some of the renderings, I don't particularly care for them because they don't have those elements of these drawings.
I think we're basing it on the applicant's testimony that the elevations are newer and more accurate than some of the renderings. So.
Okay, okay.
For clarity purpose too, we'll, Emily and I will be reviewing building plans at some point for this, and we will not be looking at renderings. So, the utility, I'd like it to tie to the elevations.
Okay.
I, I'm gonna say, kind of wrap up my final one is, I know, I think we all know where the vote's gonna go, how it's gonna fall. Pretty good indication. I'm going to probably cast, I'm not against it just because of the, I feel there's another element that I talked about earlier, the sandy style overall not being met in my mind on it. I don't want to hold it up any more than we are, than I already have. But just kind of more on the record, I don't think that this is meeting it. I think it hits a lot of points on it, it's a different look, et cetera, all those things. But I don't think it does what the code has in it, has there today. So again, that's my interpretation of the code. I'm done.
Yep. Okay, great. But we appreciate your comments, really do. Anybody else, final comments before somebody floats a motion?
I'm gonna be kind of with Ron on it. And it's just my interpretation of the, of the code. And I appreciate Kelly's comments. And if there's anything else, you know, we, when we do have a presentation in front of the commission, the staff work should be complete by the applicant. And we start finding these things that look different, it makes it, it makes it more difficult. But at that, but you know, I do like the building. And it's always sure people are aware of that. My main concern is the code and the down slope, downstream effects of the slippery slope that are, are not, not there. But I appreciate Emily's comment that in the final order, they will cover that.
Okay, somebody gonna venture a motion, which really just needs to be, it's what it sounded like, a motion would be to approve the application with the, each of the five special requests, I guess you could call them that.
Well, there's also all the other stuff at the end here, you know, the, all the conditions of approval at the end.
Right, based on the staff report, findings of facts, conditions of approval, of approval, and staff report. And then specifically approving each of those five special requests.
I'll take the stab at that. I'd like to make a motion to approve file 20 dash year 06, Blackman's County Health Clinic Center, based on the findings of facts, the conditions of approval, and the approved variances and design deviations.
And adjustments.
And adjustment, oh, right, there's an adjustment up front.
Yeah.
I was moved, seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, Todd, Todd was the second on that. And we'll do a roll call vote.
Sorry, I'm catching up on the minutes here. Okay, so Commissioner Carlton?
No.
Commissioner Losowski?
No.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Unmute, Hollis.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Maite?
No.
And Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby, it looks like you're the split vote.
I'm just gonna vote yes.
Okay, so the motion passes four to three. Is that what you have?
All right. Everybody want a little break?
Why don't we take five minutes, five minutes or something like that? One thing for the applicant, I really want to thank you for, for all your work. I mean, don't take our votes as anything other than the support for what you're gonna do into that corner, first of all, and the services you're gonna provide to the city.
I echo Don. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking forward to, to seeing what comes to that corner and your facility.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laurie and Scott. Beautiful work.
Thank you. I'd like to add, we do have windows in the dental office too. They're just up high. When you're looking in your bay, you can look out the windows into the trees.
When you're laying clay on your back. Okay, we'll take a five minute. It's like our attorney is left. Nope, there he is, Spencer's there. Okay.
Spencer's here to keep us in trouble.
Yeah. All right. Along to our final public hearing, which we will open at 9:06. This is file number 20 dash 012. This is file number twenty dash zero one two. Code amendment, small cell code change. And the extensions from the hearing body. This one is, I forget from the notes, Kelly, is this one that we just sent on to, to council or is this one that we approving?
Technically speaking, because it's outside of chapter seventeen, we don't even actually need you or by law have to have you actually review it. However, because the proposals dealing with design and different things related to that, we thought we would like planning prior to you forwarding on a recommendation to city council.
Okay, so that's what we are doing is forwarding our recommendation.
Yeah, and because we're having a public, I mean, because it's in a public meeting, um, you would need to ask, uh, Mr. Parsons, but I believe it would be probably just wise to follow the legislative hearing method.
And I don't have a copy of that. Oh, wait, I may have. I have an old.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, it, I was gonna say, it, it's a good idea to follow the legislative script, but really because we're talking about an amendment to, the city's development regulations. It's the, the statutory requirements are a lot less lax, but if you do have an old one handy, it would be good to, to track off of it.
Okay. Yes, may not be a whole lot different. Um, call for any extensions, anybody? Any, um, conflict of interest? Nothing, nothing seen or heard? Uh, if anybody in the public that's maybe listening or watching any challenges, and again, to raise a challenge, you click the raise your hand icon in Zoom or you dial pound nine, if you're on the phone to raise your hand and be recognized. Any challenge to any individual commissioner? I'm assuming you're not seeing anything, Kelly. Is there anybody out there?
Sorry, there's music in the background in my house. Um, yeah, there are still people watching, uh, but I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. All right, if you testify, you must raise all issues at this hearing, which is not true because it'll be going to, uh, city council eventually. Your comments should state why the legislative amendment should or should not be approved or include proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of deals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party has the right to request the continuance of the public hearing or, and the alternative to have the record remain open. Staff report.
Great. Um, so this is my first, uh, planning commission presentation, so be nice to me. Okay, so thanks for giving me the opportunity to, uh, present this recommended code adoption. Um, first, I'll just give a little bit of background on this topic. So we're moving into a fifth generation or 5G cellular technology. And that's a response to, um, a global need for increased network capacity. Um, one of the ways that cellular technology companies are, uh, introducing 5G is through small cells, small cell or stealth facilities. Um, I'll show you a couple of pictures in the next couple of slides, um, but basically these are facilities which are placed on existing utility poles. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, the FCC released a memo explaining how cities are allowed to regulate these small cell facilities. And they determine that the standards for regulation um, are allowed so long as they are reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments, objective and published in advance. Um, so here's an example of what a small cell facility looks like compared to a traditional macro cell tower. So you can see it, it's very compact. It just fits right on the top of that utility pole. And then just a couple of other pictures of what the small cell facilities can look like. So we originally thought about including the small cell code, code into title seventeen, the development title. Um, but after consulting with Spencer, um, we decided to put it in title twelve, the street sidewalks and public property title. Um, there's precedent here, um, as this is what other Oregon cities, um, have done. So, um, I'm just gonna read the purpose of the code addition. This is, uh, in the proposed chapter twelve dot twenty. The purpose of this chapter is to establish reasonable and non discriminatory policies and procedures for the placement of small cell, whoops, small cell wireless facilities in the right of way within, um, the city's jurisdiction, consistent with and to the extent permitted by federal and state law in order to prove public benefit consistent with the preservation of the integrity, safe usage and reasonable aesthetic qualities of the city, cities right of way and the city as a whole. So the purpose of the code, very briefly, is to, um, take what sort of regulatory power is granted by the FCC to the city of Sandy, um, use that to preserve aesthetic quality, um, and safety in the city without overstepping what we are legally allowed to do. Um, there are six, uh, points of intent in the code. Um, prevent interference with the use of streets, sidewalks, alleys, parkways and other public ways and places. Prevent the creation of obstructions and other conditions that are hazardous to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Prevent interference with the facilities and operations of facilities lawfully located in rights of way or public property. Protect against an environmental damage, including damage to trees. Preserve the character of the community, historic districts or areas with decorative bowls and facilitate technology advancements such as deployment of small wireless facilities to provide the benefits of wireless service. Um, just to kind of go over what the key points are in the code adoption, um, there's a list of definitions, the application requirements, any special design requirements. Uh, requirements for removal, relocation, modification, and then also requirements for co-location. So we recommend that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval for the proposed code addition to city council. Um, Spencer, did you want to add anything? Is he still on?
He's there, but I don't know if he's muted or not.
Kelly, do you mind exiting full screen so we can see everybody on the, on the deal?
Great presentation.
So yeah, one of, one of the things, I think Spencer's having a lag or his computer's frozen. So he's the one that really assisted. It was all Shelley and Spencer on this. I didn't, I didn't do anything. Uh, I just want to be very clear about that. Um, I don't, I don't like to take credit when credit's not due, so I have not been almost doing anything on this. Shelley's been terrific on it, so I thank you for that.
Unless you guys don't like it, then Kelly did everything.
The only thing I wanted to really add to that is what is being proposed before you is based on the League of Oregon Cities' uh, model code that they wrote and that they've been working through with the FCC and with these other, uh, groups such as Verizon, ATT, Sprint, uh, T-Mobile. And so this is, I believe, and Spencer's back on, I can see now, so he can elaborate further on this, but I believe what's being proposed to you tonight, um, we'll be seeing a lot of communities throughout the state of Oregon, so does a model code. It's not something that we wrote uniquely to the city of Sandy. Spencer, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, sorry, I, I got disconnected somehow, but I'm back on. Um, so the, what you have before you, it actually represents about a year's worth of work between, um, many, uh, Oregon jurisdictions that are trying to, and I'll apologize, Kelly may have said some of this, but um, Oregon jurisdictions got together and tried to put some small cell standards together um, to present a united front to industry, A, to facilitate the rollout of 5G technology, but also B, as a legal defense, uh, kind of a herd defense, a school of fish defense for if and when, um, industry tries to challenge any of these standards. So, um, uh, I think Shelley did a good job of kind of showing the difference between macro towers and these 5G towers. One, one thing that I just will point out is unlike the macro towers, what the city can expect with these small cell facilities is a proliferation of them. So, um, they're, they're estimated to only cover an area of two to five hundred square feet. So you'll need multiple nodes within an area to provide, uh, 5G coverage and, and the FCC's order requires cities to allow them to be placed in the right of way. So to a certain extent, the city is being told that we have to provide this technology rollout on, uh, city right of way property. Um, what these standards do is track the FCC order and preserve for the city the maximum amount of discretion as possible while still complying, um, with the mandates of the FCC order itself. I don't know if I missed anything else, and Shelley, your question to me got cut off halfway through, so I didn't hear that. If you want to, um, re pose it.
I was just asking if you had anything to add.
Yeah, so that's about it for my, for anything that I'd like to add.
Actually, I do, I do have one more, uh, request. Spencer, since you're so knowledgeable on the subject and I, I'm really not knowledgeable on this 5G stuff, but I just want to make sure everybody understands. If you have questions, direct them to Shelley or Spencer. I don't really have any knowledge on this stuff. Um, but one thing that will be coming before the city council, um, is that, um, Mr. Peitzel, one of our city council members is really plugged into all of this. Um, so they're gonna be having a work session on July twentieth. And also Greg Brewster, the Sandy Net Director is also plugged into it. So they're gonna be giving us advice and help on it as well. This is, planning is kind of leading the charge, but we're by no means experts on any of this that's coming forward. We've just been asked to kind of help push it through and, uh, bring ordinances and resolutions to council. So one thing I did want, uh, Spencer to elaborate on a little bit is just kind of explaining to the planning commission also that we're gonna be, um, proposing a resolution for fees associated with right of way usage. And then also, um, why this ordinance can't be within chapter seventeen, if you can just elaborate, due to shot clocks and other SEC rules.
Yeah, sure. So as to the first point, um, you know, and the planning commission may notice that, um, we're, we're running this by you, but we're talking about putting it in, in the street regulation chapter. Um, but as to, um, the first point, we've got, um, we have, uh, macro towers that are generally regulated within, uh, land use regulations, but the FCC order specifies that applications that come to the city for what's called the co-location of facilities in the right of way, which is, uh, short form for saying the placement of 5G equipment on existing utility poles or light, uh, streetlights or exist, other existing infrastructure need to be processed in sixty days. And, uh, the, an application that includes the placement of a new support structure, so in other words, a new purpose specific pole to hold the 5G equipment needs to be processed in ninety days. And those are really incongruous with land use, like for instance, the hundred and twenty day rule, and they're largely incompatible. And so if you put these into the land use chapter of the code, you right out of the starting bat be creating inconsistencies between what the FCC order is requiring now and what, um, and, and what, uh, land, Oregon land use law requires for land use deadlines. For the fees, the FCC has said each one of those co-locations, uh, and up to five of them need to be processed for five hundred dollars. So you'll see applications that come in, in batches where they'll want to, they'll propose citing five, uh, five nodes in the right of way. And the FCC has attempted to cap that at five hundred dollars for the first five and a hundred dollars for each additional one after that and a flat thousand dollar fee for a new support structure. Um, and so the resolution that Kelly's talking about is going, it kind of tracks that. Now, I want to note that, um, uh, a coalition of local government entities, uh, which includes Sandy by proxy by way of the League of Oregon Cities is challenging the FCC order specifically as to those fee restrictions because, um, as a practical matter, the city, uh, those, those low numbers don't, won't even be able to begin to, um, capture the cities invested in expenses and, in processing applications like this. So it's being challenged on multiple fronts, but specifically on that front. That's the fee portion. And then, yeah, the, the second portion is, uh, for, um, for the shot clocks, it's just not gonna work in the land use chapter. So we're putting it in the street chapter. Almost everyone's doing that. League of Oregon Cities is recommending that you keep it separate from land use. Land use regulations, just so that it's clear. And so that's how it's, that's how it's presented to you as part of chapter twelve.
Now, a good time to ask a question?
Yeah, well, if anyone has any questions for me, please feel free to go ahead. I, I mean, probably run them through the, the chair, but I, I'm willing to answer any questions they might have.
This is kind of related to what you said with the restrictions on, on the fees. And I'm making an assumption that the macro towers were built by the carriers. And these, these micros that are gonna go on top of the street utilities, they're gonna put limitations on those fees that they allow the city to charge. Who in the end then pays for the infrastructure changes to house the, the micros on top or, or the placement of those? Is that coming from our dollars in the city or is that coming through some FCC donation? Um, how does that, how is that affecting our citizens?
It's, it's not coming from the FCC and the FCC is in lockstep with the industry and trying to drive down their costs. And one can only assume that the purpose on that is to, and attempt to help the shareholders. So ultimately, as far as administration is concerned, the city of Sandy and its residents will be subsidizing the, subsidizing the cost for processing these applications. Now, the FCC order itself says that the city can limit its, um, the, the city can charge a reasonable approximation of its costs. So, and certainly the city can't be required, say that there's a some existing support structure, but it's not engineered to support the additional weight of 5G equipment. The city isn't gonna be required to pay for the replacement and the upgrade of that. That would fall on industry, but the actual processing of it, the FCC has attempted to say that cities nationwide, no differentiation between uh, Sandy, Oregon, Los Angeles, California, uh, Toledo, Kansas, Toledo, Ohio, any of those places, they're saying you should be able to process these for five hundred bucks for the first five and a hundred bucks for everyone after that, and for a new support structure for a fat cost of a thousand bucks. And charge an annual fee of no greater than two hundred and seventy dollars per site for occupying the public right of way. So that's exactly why the coalition of local governments are charging that, uh, have brought a suit that's now the ninth circuit against the FCC order because we kind of are, are of the view that that kind of is an inverse of a takings, but instead of, uh, taking for, uh, public benefit, it is a taking of, uh, local government, often local government's, uh, most valuable asset, its real property in the right of way. And bestowing a subsidized use of that on, uh, the telecom industry and asking the city to foot the bill for the difference.
I appreciate you putting that on the record. That's what I wanted to hear said, because I think it's important for the citizens to know where that money's gonna come from.
I have one quick question for Shelley. In the, in the staff report, what's the role of Exhibit A? It starts out with definitions, which appears to be a repeat of what we already got and then goes into some stuff. I just didn't know what Exhibit A represented.
Let me pull up that staff report just one second.
One other thing I'll mention while she's pulling that up is that this exercise, Shelley and Kelly started this exercise by asking just for some simple amendments to 17, and I kind of hijacked the process. So what you're seeing tonight is phase one. My understanding from Kelly is that also, once we get this process finished, specific to small cell technology, he's going to want to come back with some recommended amendments to 17 specifically to update and beef up the city's requirements applicable to macro towers. Cause macro towers aren't going away. All these small cell towers from a technical logical standpoint, the data that they collect feeds into the macro towers and then into the backbone of the system. So they're, they're, they're not going away. They're still here to stay.
Yeah, that is correct, that we will be coming back before you, hopefully in the next six months or so with modifications to the chapter 17, uh, major utility facility requirements. They're, they're, I think, original to like the 1980 something code. And we just need to reevaluate them because there's been a lot that have changed in that time period.
To answer your question, is Exhibit A not the text, the draft text of the, of chapter 12 dot 20?
Well, it starts out that way. I mean, it lists the definitions. And then that's what I did. I kind of looked back and forth and after the definitions, our, our code kind of jumps into application and fees. And after the definitions here, it jumps into general requirements, starting with antenna volume. So I didn't know, for example, if it's given a maybe been some, I want to call it boilerplate, but some template that I think of a Oregon cities had popped out that you used in some way. But I, you know, normally what we have is on the staff report on the front, you, you, if you have an exhibit, you'd have Exhibit A and you'd say what it is. If you look at the one, you know, we just got through, you know, there's a list of all the exhibits. But no, it was just vacant. So I was just asking the question of what Exhibit A's role is in this process?
Okay, that should be the, the text, the draft text of the code adoption.
Yeah, so let me, let me help out with that. That was something that, yeah, so the, the first part, which starts off with 1220 small wireless facilities, that, that section is the code language that would be added to chapter 12. Exhibit A, I believe, and Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong, but Exhibit A would then be adopted by a separate resolution as the design criteria for small cell. And it would be adopted by the city of Sandy, but it wouldn't be located within the municipal code.
But that's correct. So they'll, I mean, the, the city can decide where it wants to house that, whether it's in public works standards or standalone. But those would just be, these are going to be the, the standards that are enshrined within the code. And then in addition to that will be some more, somewhat more technical design standards for, you know, specific to the small cell facilities themselves.
Okay. My other question was, you made a comment, you know, Spencer earlier that, that the range for these things was like 500 square feet or something like that, which struck me as hugely small. I'm going to need, I'm going to need three of them in my house. Four of them, maybe.
Yeah. So what, what, when I said, I meant linear, 500 linear feet. So essentially, if you can imagine like on our arterial street, it might be on every second or third utility pole or street pole that they, that one service provider's equipment would need to be located to be able to relay the information back to a macro tower.
So that's going to be, that's going to be going on through, through the entire town of Sandy.
Yes. And they're going to start, they're going to focus their energy in the beginning, in the high traffic areas, downtown areas, heavy traffic corridors. And then they'll, they will bring it out to say more neighborhood level streets and residential areas after they have rolled it out in those heavier usage areas. But the 5G in its first rollout is kind of intended to work as kind of a complimentary service for, for wifi, if you will. And there, and it'll get there eventually, but that's really because it's going to be driven by their revenue. They're going to focus it all at first in where the heaviest usage will be.
Yeah, well, I guess that'd be kind of interesting. If you think about Sandy for the moment, you know, we, we require pretty much anything new for electricity, all be undergrounded. I'm thinking of my neighborhood, the only thing you're going to poke it on is going to be a street light pole, which, I mean, the original Sandy Net was on a street pole outside my house, you know?
Won't that directly compete with Sandy Net too?
No, one, one difference, actually the Sandy Net Director's on Greg and he just texted me. So actually I didn't know this until he just let me know. All these poles are interconnected with fiber. But they actually do not want to use Sandy Net. They want to use their own fiber, I believe.
Sure.
But yeah, these things are all interconnected through a fiber system, according to Greg.
So they're going to, other words, there's one sitting on a, on a street light pole outside my house, for example. That's, that's going to be connected through fiber. It's not going to just go to the next one, like, you know, through the air.
That's what he says, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of interesting because I guess what I learned here for the moment is if you live outside of any town, you're in trouble. How are you going to get 5G?
They got the rural broadband.
Quick thing on process. Just one quick thing on process, Greg was going to chime in here. And then before we lose too much track of it, I think, just note, Gary, I think we should allow public comments. I see that Kathleen has her hand up as well.
Yeah, yeah, we need to move on. We can get, it's easy to get caught up in the novelty of this and lose sight of what we're tasked with tonight. Relative to this code. So then we will move, if staff is done with their report.
I would like Greg to speak. He's the Sandy Net Director.
Okay, Greg, you have the, you have the mic and the camera and give us your name and address.
Oh, he doesn't need to do that. He's staff.
Oh, okay, he's staff.
Yeah.
Is he just on audio?
Greg, are you there?
Are you guys able to hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I apologize. I, I would try, I won't try to take up too much time and get into the weeds on things here. I just want to make a couple of clarifications, just so you guys are kind of aware is that 5G is, 5G is a very vague term for a lot of different things there. So I wouldn't put, put it past and say that they won't use macro cell sites. I, from my understanding and in most deployments, at least so far, and what I'm expecting in the future is that they will mostly be fed by fiber to the light poles. They may chain or daily chains every so often, but there, to my knowledge, there is, in the current studies, there have been large amounts of fiber construction and basically attachments to anything and everything that can provide it. Most 5G encompasses a wide range of different frequencies, some that penetrate trees and home, homes better than others. And the high speeds that they're promising are up in the type of frequencies that don't go through homes very well. So it's, it's a very catchall term, I will say. And so each deployment is different. But I did want to clarify that there, I believe there would definitely be a certain amount, a various amount of construction in Sandy. Uh, if there, you know, is going to be a 5G carrier introducing themselves. And also to my knowledge, and I could be wrong here from the research that I've seen, and it may be outdated at this point, is that 5G carriers don't really coexist with other carriers. So for example, T-Mobile would not coexist with, with Verizon or share their antennas. That may have changed, but that, you know, requiring separate antennas on those poles, that's why they look so ugly as they would be in those, in that presentation. And, you know, every carrier slapping their own antenna onto a pole, you can't just put a single pole, from my understanding. Um, I could be wrong on that, so, but that has been my assumption from the conferences I've gone to and how things have been relayed to me in that sense there. So it's definitely a kind of an unknown. And that's why, you know, the big metropolitan areas are kind of gaining more traction on it and seeing how it's going out. I just know that there's been a lot of challenges from every aspect of it there. So, you know, definitely a place in Sandy might have less, less construction and more macro site back halls. But at the same time, there would definitely be fiber construction that would be built and owned by the phone companies themselves. That's all.
Sure, I have a quick question for Greg, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I see somebody's asked a question, they're, they're kind of leading into where I was going to ask my question. Can you tell me anything about the signal of the 5G signal and safety parameters for the city? Cause I, dealing with enterprise technology in my agency, I've been looking into that a little bit. I've heard some rumors about it across the globe. I'm just asking for your expertise on 5G signals and its, its effect on, on safety.
In my, my professional opinion, I think there's a lot of misinformation about it. I don't have the specifics and I would, I would stand by what the FCC has put as their limitations or regulations that carriers are supposed to provide by in order to prevent or allow health. You know, not put the, the public at, at risk there. I am in no way a wireless engineer that can, you know, tell you. I, I definitely would say that it depends, but also there is, from my understanding, there's been no scientific concrete evidence that 5G causes health issues at this time. But, you know, I'm not in, in the sort of position that can definitely, definitively say that. I'm not that kind of engineer.
No, thank you. I'm, I'm not the expert. I just wanted to know if you had any more information than what a Google search would find.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely stand by that. That's one of, I believe, one of FCC's major roles is to calculate and regulate that. And so I believe that they would probably be a better source of information and be a better direction to obtain that proper knowledge, in my opinion.
I can speak to that a little bit. So I'm personally really passionate about science literacy. I read a lot of science blogs and listen to a lot of science podcasts because I'm kind of a nerd. And especially since working on this project, I've been doing quite a bit of research looking into 5G and any potential health effects. And what I've consistently found is that the overwhelming scientific consensus is that there is no causal relationship between 5G technology and any ill health effects. And studies which have shown, or studies which have concluded that there are those connections have quite a bit wrong with their methodology. So the, the overall, it's not just the FCC. Independent scientists would argue that there is no causal relationship between 5G technology and ill health.
Hey, jury. One thing you might do, I know this is a few questions kind of popping up and you might want to take a second for those on the meeting and to, you know, to say that, you know, we're not going to answer questions like that. They need to just do public testimony. And, you know, they, you put in their questions to public testimonies. The Q and A here isn't for us to go back and forth and dialogue with the public.
Yeah, I don't know how those are popping up because I disabled that feature. I don't.
Well, they disabled your disable.
Shelley, let me say thank you to you two for putting that on the record. I appreciate it. I think it's important that the public hears with the work that, that you are doing and that Greg is doing and the city is doing to educate themselves. Thank you.
Yeah, I would ask that individual not make any more comments on there. If he wants to testify during the open record period, he's welcome to. But I don't know how that got back enabled. That's kind of frustrating to me.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I haven't even opened them. But, but we do need to give opportunity for public testimony. This is, we don't, in a legislative matter, we don't go for proponent, opponent. It's just kind of open ended comments. I will say this, as we've just discussed, that if you ask a question, if you raise a question, don't expect it to be answered while you are speaking. Staff can maybe take a note and when they do their recap, answer it. But again, as we've said before, this is not an opportunity for dialogue. We're just looking for your testimony to get it on the record. You will also have a second time when this comes, this comes before city council. So with that said, Kelly, anybody, and again, if you're, if you're new to the call, click the raise your hand icon on the Zoom. Or if you're on the phone, it's star nine that will raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. And when you do give testimony, state your name and your address first.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Jerry, also, unless Spencer feels otherwise, I think during legislative hearings, we usually just take proponent, opponent, and neutral testimony all in like one batch?
Yeah, that's what I just did, I think.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Sorry.
We don't call for them specifically, so.
Sorry, I missed, sorry.
If you have a comment, raise your hand.
Yeah, Kathleen Walker, I'm going to unmute you right now.
Do you want my address again?
Yep. For the record, please.
Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Bluff Road. So from what, you know, what I first initially had was a lot of questions, but I've got some of them answered here. What I think I had heard was that AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, everybody's going to have to have their own tower. They're not going to be co-located on one pole. So from that, I could assume every pole in town will have, especially if they're only covering 500 square feet or literally a feet or whatever it is, then every pole we have will be used for these wireless facilities. And, um, you know, first of all, I wanted to say that, you know, I meant to say, thanks to our existing administration's willingness to allow industry to do whatever they want and stick the cost both monetarily, aesthetically, and possibly health wise onto the public and city government. That, this whole proposal is pretty frustrating, I think. The, the concern about not being able to co-locate poles, different companies on one pole is a concern. It, it appears like having to have a, you know, such a small, have, have these facilities located so, you know, almost, almost on every pole, just to be able to get the coverage. A question I guess to ask is, you said that these wireless things require fiber net. Are they using city of Sandy's fiber net or is this their own fiber net? And what's the implications of, of them having to add their own fiber net in there? And of course, I, you know, understand about, you know, nothing of this stuff. So pardon my ignorance, but that's a question I have for, for, for you all to be asking. And this also has the potential for these companies to be, be competing with Sandy Net to provide internet services without the costs that we have already put into that, especially with the fiber. So we spent a huge amount of money, something like $9 million or more to develop our Sandy Net. And I don't have a good handle on how this uses our, uses our existing investment or not and/or competes with our existing investment. And lastly, it appears, you know, we'd be adding these poles all over the place at a time when we should be burying utilities poles and not adding more poles. I'm really concerned about the potential increase for more poles just to house these stupid wireless facilities. And then I would like to get answers. I am very concerned about the, the health aspects of it. I, you know, I, I kind of just scoffed when I heard the, you know, who's been doing the studies? That's the question that you'd be asking is the effects of 5G, a lot of times the industries are the ones doing the studies. We don't, I don't think we've had the, the enough time go by to really study the short and long term health effects of, of, of 5G. And especially when you've got them deployed on every, in, in everybody's front yard, on every power pole going up and down the street. And it appears that we're going to be the guinea pigs here. Because they, you know, they don't, I don't think they have enough data neutral to even make a, to make, to make some of the conclusions that they are making scientifically. So what, I guess my bottom line is that there's a lot of questions here. You've got a few answers here. There's some more questions. This is all very new to all of us. And I would request that you And I would request that you um get some more the the answers um to all these questions out to everybody. And um that you continue the public hearing and delay making a decision on this tonight until we get that information so that um so that we can kind of have a better understanding of how how many poles, how you know, what's the deal with the fiber and get it, get all that stuff kind of assessed so that we really, so that you're making recommendations from a place where you understand the scope of of what's being proposed. So that's, those are my comments. I appreciate you guys listening to me tonight. I um it's it's a real challenge here. This is all, I think, uh kind of unknown and um unknowable to some extent. Thanks.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Use your user error here here. And you might want to call for one last time for public comments. I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, if we'll do that. This is the time for public testimony. If you have some comments, anything you'd like to share on the matter before us right now, raise your hand through the Zoom app or star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone.
Okay, I do not see.
Okay. We'll go back to uh staff, to Shelley. If you've got uh either some answers that you think we need to hear for our decision tonight.
Sure. Um so again, I just want to reiterate that um the FCC uh requires that cities allow um 5G small cell uh facilities uh in the public right of way. And um municipalities can only do so much to regulate um them for their aesthetic quality, their uh safety, their you know, being out of the way as much as possible. Um and the code which we've uh um used from the Oregon League of Cities, um I think does a a good job of um taking what cities are allowed to do um and uh incorporating regulatory language surrounding that. I also, you know, welcome any, you know, I, when I talk about the scientific um consensus, you know, don't take my word for it. Absolutely do your own research. Absolutely look at who uh is funding research. Um so I, yeah, I did that. Those are kind of the two big things that I wanted to to touch on.
Yeah, the only other thing I would just, I mean, we can continue this the next meeting if you want. Um like I said, city council will be hearing this on July 20th at a work session. And then from there, they will be having an actual public hearing at a future date, either in August or September, to look at the code even more and do an adoption. Um I mean, I I sympathize with Ms. Walker. I I really don't want to see these all around town either. I live in town and I think it is gonna be added to like just additional light around our light poles and different utility structures. However, as Shelley and Spencer both pointed out, we, the city of Sandy really doesn't have a choice. We're gonna have to allow them. Um the the code's attempt is to make them as unsight- unsightly as possible or the opposite of what I just said. The code is trying to make them um as nice as possible when you see them in the right of way and the transformers that are associated with them.
I'll I'll add it. I'll add just a couple of points um to respond to the testimony. One, um regardless of whether or not you believe or don't believe the independent uh scientific studies about RF emissions, the fact of the matter is that the federal government has completely preempted the regulation of RF emissions for cellular technology, which includes not just macro towers, but also this 5G equipment. So even if the city of Sandy commissioned a multimillion-dollar study and determined itself that there were deleterious health effects from 5G technology, until that study is uh endorsed and adopted by the federal government, we don't have the authority to to ban the rollout of the technology based on that study. The FCC undertook an analysis of RF emissions in 1996 and concluded, this is pre-small cell 5G technology, but uh in the in the buildup of the cellular movement, did a study and determined what frequency levels were acceptable for public health and and industry has held to that standard. And since that time, they have very actively refused public government, local governments request to revisit and update that analysis. And the fact of the matter is, until the federal government decides to do it, those are the standards we're stuck with. And that is classic federalism in action. Congress has preempted the field. They've told us it's safe. If we deny an application for a macro cell tower or small G or 5G based on uh local jurisdiction reservations about RF emissionsy standards, it will be subject to reversal uh in a in a court of law. So we're not able to con- even consider that in beyond this, beyond the scope of saying 5G equipment must meet federal standards. That's how limited our scope is. That's all that we can say. And if they do, we're done and our role is complete. The second point about wanting to stall for an indeterminate amount of time is I I generally agree with a slow and deliberate approach to adopting um code updates. In this case, however, the city does not have any 5G small cell standards on the books to apply, and the industry already has the right to come in and submit an application. So without any standards in place, if the city received an application to it for small cell facilities tomorrow, we would have no standards to apply, no basis to deny an application, no aesthetic standards to hold against an application. And so the longer that the planning commission and or the city council takes in this process of getting these put into the code and the um and the design standard adopted, the greater the risk of that occurrence happening becomes. And the and the person who provided the public testimony will be, would find themselves in a less desirable position by taking more time instead of expediting the process. Um finally, uh under federal law, uh under the, under the telecommunications act in 1996, one of the key provisions says that uh the the city can't adopt any standards that um that essentially make it impossible for telecommunication providers to provide the service they're seeking to provide. So um we couldn't, we couldn't say adopt standards for small cell technology that is, say, we wanted to make it so small that uh there's no technology to provide the service at this time. That would be a violation of federal law. Uh the industry often argues in the same vein that we can't require undergrounding of any facilities because this is small cell technology up in the air and it has to be up in the air. And my general response to that, this is an unsettled area of law, but my general response to that has been for the antennas, that's correct. They need to be up in the air, but in certain circumstances in historic districts or in downtown districts, the city would, if it wanted to, consider undergrounding of cabinets, say, of cabinets that they they um didn't want to have above ground so long as those cabinets were next to a support structure like utility pole and it was mounted on the top. And you'll see in these standards, there's some general placeholder language in section 12.20.050 subsection B. And I kind of, there's some um all caps language in there, so it's just something for the planning commissioners to think about. If that's something that you're interested in, it can be part of a recommendation to pass on to the city council ultimately. Whether to um, whether the the city council should consider some kind of limited undergrounding requirements as well. That's all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, but our decision tonight, and you, it was very helpful, Spencer, is we're not we're not tasked with deciding whether or not Sandy wants 5G's 5G small cells. That decision has been made.
That decision's been made by the FCC. We're just deciding whether or not we want to exercise our limited regulatory authority on how that infrastructure gets brought into Sandy.
Yep. We're gonna keep that in focus.
Jerry, I suggest we close the public hearing.
Yeah, I would go ahead and make a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I second.
They moved and seconded Ron was the seconder uh to close the public hearing at 9:57. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Yeah.
Sometimes you have to know when a train's coming down the road to just get out of its way and move on before the 10 o'clock news happens.
Well, further discussion before um Spencer just mentioned something about this uh um capitalized text that's on page six. I don't know if that's the only place. But I think what you were saying, Spencer, is that that's uh suggested text?
That that's not suggested text. That's just some, that wouldn't actually be the um language that goes into the code. That's the bracketed language was just for your information. In the event that there was some concern on the part of the uh planning commission for imposing underground requirements, I I provided that explanation in there. I want to be, you know, in full disclosure, I want to be clear to the planning commission that if the city were to pursue undergrounding requirements, it would be taken a fairly aggressive position. Uh it's not 100% certain in industry. I can promise you if the city does ultimately adopt some undergrounding requirements, it's gonna be under the protest of industry. But it's not the, it wouldn't be the first jurisdiction that I've helped adopt some limited undergrounding requirements. So I just thought, since this was coming to you for a recommendation to the council, um instead of wasting the time drafting language that you might not be interested in, it was just kind of a flag for you to recommend to the council whether or not we should include some limited undergrounding requirements.
How was Sandy net, just for public record? How was sending that fiber routed?
Underground.
Underground.
Are you?
I think we.
Battery though? Sorry, Ron.
I was just gonna say, I think we should take the council's advice, the staff's advice. Could change the city, city, city councils, I can see this, what, till July something? It may change, but we should get ahead of it. I mean, I don't understand at all, take trying to read it, debating underground, above ground. I say, let's move it forward. I give my recommendation to pass along to the city council. I'm tired. I want to go home. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, this is, this appears to be a train that's just coming down the roads. Question isn't if, the question's how. That's what the code is about. And um, you know, so, y- you know, there are some things like, you know, it seems weird that, you know, you'd have to with three major carriers, you could probably assume they're they're gonna be putting stuff on these things. If you go back to the early days of Sandy net, when it was not wired, it was wireless. Um that's how they they got it all over town. You know, there was a box outside of my house and just down the street on the corner, there's another box and I could measure, Bob, it was no, about 500 feet. So um, I mean, how many people recognize those little boxes with two antennas out the top and one out the bottom that were for Sandy nets, uh wireless? And you know, if you had sand at that time, you had a little thing sticking outside of your house. That looked a little bit like an antenna. There's some, you couldn't remember that. So again, I don't see this, all this is similar than that, other than if you can't co-locate on the same pole, then um you know, then, you know, you could have, you know, more of them there there. But again, there the PG has most of these poles. And if you look up, you know, most people aren't gonna see them anyway.
Some of the transformer equipment can be the size of like a stove, though. It can be rather huge. Um we were shown at a legal conference that Emily and I went to in December. Um 5G came up and that's what kind of prompted us to start looking into this even more. Um some of the transformer locations can be like the size of stoves or refrigerators. So I I would actually appreciate, Spencer, from a staff perspective, if you could add some additional language for undergrounding to at least propose it to city council and then they can kind of weigh it a little bit further.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. Um I can include it. Uh if the planning commission wants to give just general direction to include some undergrounding requirements, what I've typically done is when a a client has asked for that uh written a lang- written language that says, you know, in the downtown district, for example, um the the cabinet, you know, the the non-antenna equipment shall be grounded unless the applicant can establish uh that it's not reasonably feasible to provide service with that equipment undergrounded. So then it provides some kind of flexibility in the standard, but the general default in that discrete area would be that the cabinets uh would go underground.
I mean, I I suggest that's it. I mean, we don't need to get the language on all that, you know? I just suggest we move on, suggest the council that they strap out the undergrounding with with count with um our legal counsel. And that's it.
Mm-hmm. Was there anything else?
I wonder, I.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I I agree with what Dawn just said. Um but I'm also wondering if the planning commission can um ask city council if if they, maybe we can't do anything about it, but if we could at least say that we would protest, we would like to see them cohabitate in the same spaces whenever possible rather than running to the same problem we've had with cell phones in general, which is, you know, these monstrosities because they don't want to share a pole.
I think a lot of them.
We're working really hard to make our community beautiful. Well, I I know, but what I heard somebody, I think it was Spencer, say earlier is that that they're moving, I don't know if it was Spencer or Shelley, but that they are not required to share a pole. So the undergrounding piece seems important. And at least Sandy being on record for saying that we want them to share resources whenever possible rather than littering our skylines that we've been working so hard. Yeah, go ahead.
In my um, in my experience with this, the cities that have adopted uh small wireless facility standards at this point, what we pretty much universally hear from all the industry representatives who testify is that the tech, it's it, and it may change over time. It's kind of a new nascent technology. But at least as of right now, they're saying they can't locate their equipment that close to each other and it remained functional. And so there, you know, you kind of will end up, for instance, with the first uh pole being an AT&amp;T pole and the next one being a Verizon pole and the one after that, AT&amp;T. And and that's why there was a lot of back and forth at FCC level at limiting the size of the equipment. And Kelly's right um that, you know, that the non-antenna equipment is capped at 28 cubic feet, which isn't small. Um but that was even a fight to get that language into the FCC order. And the antennas are capped, I think, at three cubic feet total for all the antenna on that on a pole. But when you think about that, if those are the numbers that we're fighting over, it's gonna be pretty difficult and it might get pretty aesthetically unpleasing to double those cubic numbers and put them on a single support structure. cubic numbers and put them on a single support structure.
Yeah, we were shown an example
I see.
in Dallas Tech, I believe it was. And they had co-located three on one pole. And basically, there was three mini refrigerators, the size of mini refrigerators all around the pole. I mean, it was crazy. So I I do agree with Spencer that if we co-locate, it has some benefits, but then those poles with the co-location just become really messy, I think.
Well, it's going to become, you know, kind of can become interesting because, you know, Sandy is going from six thousand to twelve thousands, as I've lived here, pretty much everything that's expanded, you know, we require it to be underground. So short of light poles, there aren't any poles. So, you know, and you know how far apart those are, carefully look at the code, but you know what the the spacing are of light poles. So if you have three providers, you're going to run out of light poles if everybody puts one on one. So now somebody's going to want to stick up pole. We're going to need to stick up pole. So
Yeah, you're
interesting.
Yeah, you're correct. On a new subdivisions, it would only be light poles in the downtown and in some of the older subdivisions where we have overhead power, overhead electricity and cable. There are some other opportunities for these things, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a large area. So but but again, that's nice stuff to talk about, you know, we're going to solve it here tonight. So I'd suggest we just move this on to council with the recommendation on the undergrounding. I don't know, Hollis, I appreciate your concerns on the co-location. Again, I'm not sure we have any control over that according to to Spencer.
Yeah, no, I I I would go along with what you're suggesting is that we send it on to city council with the recommendations that they look into the underground pieces wherever possible.
Okay.
Could you?
Got a motion?
Hearing is still open, I think.
Yes, yes.
You closed the public hearing at nine fifty seven.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So.
Yeah, I made a motion.
And I second it.
Okay.
Heard it.
Been moved second and third. Do I hear a fourth?
Come on, Chris, wake up.
Fourth. That we
He just said surgery.
My hand is up. I think we have, I'll make one last comment. I just want to throw this one in. We have a template already for Sandy net and how fiber optics was laid through the city. I I think I I one hundred percent support underground.
Okay, all right. The motion has been made and seconded to pass the the file on the city council with the with our approval, but also our desire to see undergrounding addressed in in the code. Did I get that correct on you motion makers?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, I don't know how I mentioned any, Commissioner Losowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Maithen?
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. It will go on to the council. Final thing on the agenda is anything that you may have for staff or from staff for us.
Um, on June twenty seventh at seven o'clock, we'll be meeting for our next meeting. And we're going to be talking about a conditional use permit for a Sandy feeder station, which is Northwest Natural Gas. Shelley will be bringing that proposal. So she's going to be continuing on her utility trend, at least until the next meeting, and then hopefully she'll have something a little different. Um, and then Emily is going to be bringing a code change proposal before you at the same meeting for chapters seventeen one hundred, seventeen eighty four, and then also the definitions chapter. And it's going to be in relationship to the ADU standards that came up heavily during the Bailey Meadows subdivision. What did you, oh, did I say ADU? ADT, sorry, Irish daily trips. It will also include um some additional language and requirements around what triggers the different levels of a traffic evaluation or study. So I'm sure Mr. Mobley will be very interested to chime in on that. It's something in our code that's kind of always lacked, in my opinion. So we're going to try to add that in there. And then add the expirations for subdivisions to add more time for developers to complete the subdivision prior to final cloud recording. So that's that's kind of the main things you'll be reviewing that night. We currently have the code proposal into the public works director, and then we're going to send to our legal team. If we can get the code out before seven days in advance, we'll send it to you guys just so you have some additional time to look. But I can't promise you that just because it takes a while to go through all the different agencies and people that review it. But we'll try to if we can. And then Dutch Brothers has final CFO and it's open. I don't know if you've gotten any Dutch swag or coffee or anything. Um, and then we're still processing about ten to twelve new single family home permits a month. So it's still proceeding pretty quickly. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up is the Bull Run Terrace subdivision. I won't go into it in detail, but as you know, it was delayed. And you'll be hearing that in August. And then also, we got a proposal turned in this week for the first plan development being proposed in Sandy, I believe, since two thousand and seven. So you'll be seeing that in the next couple of months as well.
All right.
So busy, busy.
Thank you.
You mentioned.
Busy, busy. Thank you.
You mentioned Dutch Brothers. I guess one thing I would, I would say, and because it does tie into what we talked a little bit about, you know, we walked up there and spent some time talking to the the folks, you know, and talked to the, there's the manager on the ship and I had a really conversation. And, you know, it was interesting is because he said, well, you know, yeah, the city made us do all of this really nice stuff right here, and I just played dumb. And and then after a while, I said, well, you know, I'm I'm on the planning commission. I was kind of part of that, and which was fine. And when we talked and and at the end of the day, what he really basically said is he's worked for five years at Dutch Brothers. He's worked at a whole bunch of them. And he said, this is the best Dutch Brothers I've ever worked at from a facility standpoint. From, you know, he's excited to come to work. I I think another thing that we sometime maybe miss from appearances when we have good looking buildings is some of those employees come excited to go to work. I mean, they're proud of their building. They're proud of that. And not to knock some of the Dutch Brothers, but you've seen them, you know, sitting in a shopping center parking lot that looked like, you know, half of a garden shed. You know, just something they're working out of. So I decided to pass that on, you know, that that the employee morale was you know, he was very obvious about it. It is very much enhanced because they were just so proud of their facility.
Yeah, it's good to hear. One other thing I'll add to that, that I'm glad Dawn actually spoke to that, is they are now going to use this Dutch Brothers in four different locations in Southern California. So if you're down in the LA area in the next five years or so, you might be strolling by and go, hey, that's the Sandy Dutch Brothers, because they're going to be using the exact same architectural style down there. So it's kind of
High five.
Do you have any, you mentioned in to council, this was the four hundredth Dutch Brothers and they're planning like a grand opening and all of that. Do you have any information on maybe when they're going to maybe do that?
Yeah, they already had it. The mayor went down and the problem is is they couldn't go over a twenty five person limit without violating governor
Right.
requirements on public gatherings exceeding
I got it.
Yeah, so unfortunately, it kind of already happened with like twenty five people and yeah, it was just unfortunate timing for that.
And you weren't invited, Don.
I don't know. I'm going to take it personally, I guess. And I guess I don't know what else to do.
I will have our own, our own opening.
I guess I should move that we adjourn, jury.
Well, after, yeah, one more thing. Shelley, really good job. Now you go adjourn.
Yes, Shelley, you did. You did do a good job. Thank you.
Good job, Shelley.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. I didn't catch a second.
Second.
Okay, we got the second. I think that was Todd.
Todd. Chris.
Chris, okay.
It's Chris.
All in favor, say aye.
Okey dokey.
Okay, we'll see y'all, see y'all next month.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Night, everyone.